At this time, I'll call our monthly meeting to order. And I'll ask that you stand at this time. And we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Langley. And Commissioner Evans will lead in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Turn to God our Father, we are grateful that you have allowed us to assemble here one more time. We are grateful and thankful, God, that you have the trust that you have placed in us and given us authority and the wisdom to execute correctly for your people. Touch our hearts and minds, God, that everything we say and do will be pleasing in thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'll entertain anyone who has a conflict with any of the agenda items Hearing none, we'll move into the item number D, the approval of the agenda. We're going to pull item number two under the public hearing. So we'll just have one public hearing tonight.
Motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
Got a motion to approve the rest of the agenda and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into our first public hearing. Got a motion by Commissioner Brand. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, Jamie? You're going to lead us off?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I will hand this out. My staff report has changed somewhat since your receipt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a completed petition to name a road was submitted by Ms. Mallory Marshall to name an existing unpaved private road of approximately 850 feet in length, which connects to North Ravenwood Lane in the Bellhaven Township. An advertisement was run in the Washington Daily News on March 30th, 2018, and April 6th, 2018. Notices of a public hearing were posted in the Beaufort County Courthouse, Bellhaven Town Hall, and Bellhaven Library on March 29th, 2018. These notices stated that the road would be named, but did not give details on what names were being considered, as this level of detail is not required. The Beaufort County E-911 ordinance requires applicants to supply three proposed road names. Mallory Marshall did supply those names. However, after reviewing the property map showing the addressed parcels around North Ravenwood Lane, staff is recommending that this easement be named North Ravenwood Lane and that the other section of North Ravenwood Lane, which connects to Hubbs Rec Road, be renamed. If you'll refer to the property map that's attached here, this will make more sense. You'll see that North Ravenwood Lane begins off of Hubbs Rec Road, and then it turns to continue in a southeast direction. Houses are already addressed off North Ravenwood in this direction, and the easement to be renamed connects directly to the existing North Ravenwood Lane and also has houses addressed as North Ravenwood. If this easement were given a different name, the houses on the easement would need to be readdressed. The section of North Ravenwood Lane that connects to Hubbs Rec Road does not have any addressed structures. Therefore, renaming this section would not change any existing addresses. In addition, the road would be contiguous rather than having that turn. Staff recommendation is to name the easement North Ravenwood Lane and to rename the section of North Ravenwood Lane that connects to Hubbs Rec Road next month. Staff will approach the property owners for a petition as required by the addressing ordinance to rename that section. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about that.
Any of the commissioners have a question? Thank you, Jamie. At this time, is there any citizen here that wants to speak on the name renaming or the naming of this proposed lane? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to name this North Ravenwood Lane.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Brand. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the North Ravenwood Lane.
So moved.
Okay. I think we've got a motion and a second. Call it for a vote. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Call it for a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Vote was unanimous. No, it didn't. My sugar would be high if I'd done that. Okay, we're down to the public comments. And I'll remind you that you have three minutes. At the end of three minutes, I'll have to gather you down. The first one we have on here, and also if you have your cellphone, at least put it on vibrate if you'll do that at this time. I know sometimes we forget to do it. All right, the first one on here on the list is John Anderson.
I had requested to speak last. Is that possible?
I, well, you were the first one on the list.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. I'll speak right now.
Okay. Remind you once again, three minutes.
I'm back, just like I told you guys that I would be back tonight. And I will be back at the next meeting that you guys have. Speaking on behalf of my nephew Cory Anderson, I am his uncle. My name is Johnny Anderson. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. There's some things I want to clarify because there's some things being said about comments I've made prior to this. I want to clarify the record concerning the harassment and intimidation of my brother-in-law, Clarence Whitley, by Sheriff Ernie Coleman. I have the record in hand. It's on record with the Washington Police Department, and it's dated for 2/25/2018. So if there's any questions about that, that's there, and it can be seen. I want to make it clear that we still have not received all the records or information that we've requested concerning my nephew Cory Anderson's death. I want to make it clear tonight, we still haven't got the answers to our questions concerning Cory's death while he was in the custody of the Beaufort County Sheriff under the authority of Sheriff Ernie Coleman. For those of you who don't know, Cory went in jail on, excuse me, on April the 28th. He was admitted to the hospital on May the 7th, and he died on May the 8th. These are the records that we don't have, just for clarification. We don't have the record for the policy on notification of family members when family members admitted to the hospital while they're in the custody of the jail. We don't have the policy on what emergency contacts are used for when they're given by an inmate and he's admitted to the jail. He gives emergency contacts. We don't have the record on that either, or the policy. We don't have the medical records that were requested by his father that would show who Cory listed as his emergency contacts when he was admitted to the Beaufort County Jail. We've asked for that, haven't got it, and any other updates. We don't have those either. The questions that we have not got answers for, I want to clarify what they are. We've asked why the family was not notified when Cory was admitted to the hospital and at least the day that, the next day, when he would die. Why the family wasn't notified? We're aware, and it's, you know, it's on record that there were deputies there with him that knew his condition. We're aware of the fact that they were in contact with their superiors. One of those obviously would be the sheriff. Trying to get confirmation to call the family, it was never given. For what reason, I can't tell you. I just know the family was never notified, and they did try to get permission. I want to know why Cory was shackled and handcuffed to, shackled and handcuffed when he was taken to the hospital, and then shackled to the hospital bed, as sick as he was. Is that policy for all inmates, or was that just for Cory? That's the question we have. I want to know why Sheriff Coleman's not been willing to meet with the family. I want to know why the medical records for May 4th, 5th, and 6th are missing from Cory's medical files. If you didn't hear what I said, I want to clarify that there are no medical records for May 4th, 5th, and 6th with Cory's medical file, which is while he was in the jail. There's three days of records missing. If I can just say this last thing, sir. I want to put on public notice, I've said before that we've asked for a meeting with the sheriff. I'm making a public request tonight for the family on behalf of Cory, for the sheriff to be willing to meet with us in a public setting so he can have an opportunity to answer these questions, and so the public will know and that you guys will know that the request has been made. And he hasn't answered that request. The last thing I would say to you guys as a board of commissioners, I asked you guys when I was here last time, if you guys would help us out with what we're dealing with to get answers to our questions and to get, you know, the information that we need. I know you guys have on the table and ordinance that you guys may bring up back up tonight. I hope you will. And I ask you guys as a board of commissioners, if you guys will be willing to vote for that. And that's the least thing I believe that you guys could do to help me as a, or help us as a family, and not just us as a family, but the public in general. Because this is not just a private matter with me and my family. This is a public matter also. And people have, we have a right to the, for the answers to the questions that we have. We have a right to know what happened to Cory, and so does the public. This could happen to anybody. It might be somebody else next time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next speaker is Christina.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Christina Beasley, and I come before you again tonight. Thank you to the commissioners who have made an effort to learn more about solar facilities. In a recent county compass, there was an article concerning government officials and public trust. This article prompted me to research the very definition of public trust. Article 11, Section 1 of the Constitution states, "Public office is a public trust. Public officers and employees must at all times be accountable to the people, serve them with utmost responsibility, integrity, loyalty, and efficiency, act with patriotism and justice, and lead modest lives." You have embodied this definition thus far, yet we have one more hurdle to jump over. The citizens of Beaufort County have elected you to govern, and with that trust, expect you to protect their burden of rights. All people who own property have these rights, which include air, soil, and the water beneath them. It is their God-given right to expect clean water, clean air to breathe, healthy soil to till, and clean water to drink. Because of these rights and the public trust, we look to you to do everything in your power to ensure that the actions of our neighbor will not in any way impede on these God-given rights. For example, much research has shown how PV solar panels are coated in Genex, a Teflon coating that protects the panels but can harm the environment. Our research is showing us that there is no guarantee to date that solar panels are non-hazardous. They are current, there are currently no regulations that legally require Wilkerson Solar to release the panel specifications. Wilkerson Solar is an LLC, which means limited liability. And if anything goes wrong, they will not be liable. The solar, the solar game is to sell the facility to a new company so that when problems arise, no one's hands are liable or dirty. There are no surety bonds to protect the county or the neighbors in any possible way. I'm sure you all recall, in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, we saw a glut of asbestos use. It was the new mineral used to protect us from fires and used in construction of many homes. It was the panacea for the future of our homes and commercial buildings. Asbestos was rubber stamps for almost every project, no demand. Fast forward, now, schools and hospitals have been closed, manufacturers have been sued due to the public's exposure to just one mineral. It has now become a health risk to anyone in contact with it. Today, it has become popular to jump on the solar bandwagon in this get-rich-quick scheme that is so luring to many. The industry has spent billions, millions of dollars to convince us that solar is so wonderful. Now the evidence shows that not only is it costly and ineffective, but the only way they succeed is through tax dollar incentives given through the government. Other counties are finding out that their risk is not paying off. I am asking you to not take the chance of having hazardous materials leach into our subsurface and water, and vote to place this project under the moratorium to ensure our water and farmland will be mandated for future sustainability. You are our public trust.
Thank you. Jamie?
Good evening. Invenergy has been working in eastern North Carolina for the last 10 years. Why? Because the money is so good for them, but it's coming off the backs of North Carolina citizens. Invenergy could have four revenue streams from Wilkinson Solar LLC. First one, power purchase agreement, sold at avoided cost per kilowatt. The energy that is produced by the solar panels and displaced on the grid has a value. Number two, renewable energy credits, which are paper certificates that will be issued to Wilkinson Solar LLC by the government once the facility is in operation. The government has created a market for these certificates by requiring businesses to purchase or develop renewable energy credits. Another form of revenue, federal tax credits that they can use in the first year of the facility is operational. Invenergy can use the credits themselves or sell the credits to such places as Bank of America, Wells Fargo, Northwestern Mutual, or any large financial firm. They will pay a percentage on the dollar for their value. Another source of revenue, the 422 lithium-ion batteries will generate a stream of income for shaving peak. This means the power placed on the grid at a specific time requested by a purchaser will be sold for a different price point than the standard PPA agreement for the raw kilowatts generated. This is a new resource and may be governed under separate contract or a separate PPA. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission requires any electrical distribution entity in the United States to purchase power generated by a renewable source such as solar or wind and pay a fair avoided cost rate per kilowatt, even if the distribution entity doesn't need the power being generated. Solar being sold in the PJM market would have minor benefits in North Carolina. Northeastern North Carolina is a very small section of PJM. Why should North Carolina give up valuable farmland, risk chemical contamination of groundwater, lose county tax revenue, and suffer potential flooding of area property to provide REC's and energy tax credits for big business in other states? Ultimately, Wilkinson Solar is foisting this unneeded commodity onto the Terracaya community, impelled by the reasons I've given you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Diane.
Good evening. I stand before you again because I work daily with those who don't yet necessarily have a voice. They are six weeks to five years old, and they will drink our county water, swim and fish in our rivers, and already hold the right to have a clean estuary to explore with their families in years to come for their future and the future of my grandchildren. I cannot remain silent. Thank you for listening to my concerns about the proposed Wilkerson Solar facility. Please evaluate its environmental implications, and as you do, consider these attached information that I'm going to leave with you. These materials support the concerns that I have that solar panels may quite probably have a negative impact on our groundwater and our land ecology. I am providing you with this information to help you make a more informed decision. A decision to allow this to move forward may incur additional liabilities that will ultimately be attached to the rate payers in the forms of higher rates. Please consider this information carefully. In this regard, these large industrial solar installations may represent the next coal-ash legacy for North Carolina. Where decisions regarding coal-ash ponds were largely uninformed at the time, the same truly cannot be said at this point regarding solar installations. The first attachment I'm leaving with you discusses the prevalent and most common uses of fluor chemicals in the PV solar industry. Commonly used fluor chemicals on solar panels include some of the emerging toxic chemicals that have already been detected in waters across our state. The second attachment describes how the manufacturers of the most toxic fluor chemicals have shifted to China as US companies voluntarily phased out production. The Washington Examiner link that I'm leaving with you reported recently, about 65% of all modules are made in China, and seven of the top 10 module manufacturers are Chinese. The final attachment is a product sheet for an energy-grade Teflon laminate marketed to PV solar manufacturers. Last year, DuPont and Schumore settled lawsuits involving a leak of a toxic chemical used to make Teflon for $671 million in cash. I encourage you to reach out to DEQ, the Environmental Management Commission, and the US EPA, as you carefully consider the potential of the Wilkerson Solar facility to harm the health and well-being of this county's communities before deciding not to include this facility in the current moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Deah?
First of all, I would like to thank you for your time and your consideration, and just, I know there's many hours and the decision-making that you have, and we really appreciate your time. As a homeowner in Terracaya, the amended map shows that the Wilkerson Solar LLC will now place solar panels behind our property. I'm asking you to please protect property value, prime farmland, and the health and safety of our community. Recent studies have shown that the heavy metal runoff and the toxic chemical makeup of the solar panels create hazardous groundwater contamination. Additionally, low-lying elevation and high-water table in this particular area would result in contamination of wells and drinking water all throughout the community. Please do not endorse the facility that will have future repercussions from an industry that is proving to be an environmental and health hazard. Please protect this part of North Carolina that holds a profound sense of heritage, long traditions, the productive agriculture, and a close connection with the environment. We ask for your protection for our community and our children. Taking away prime farmland and allowing heavy metals to leach into our water systems from the deep canals leading directly into local rivers and estuaries would be devastating to farming, food source, and water quality. Future generations will be drinking the water and will depend on these river systems. We must consider the future repercussions. Please put more time for further, further research on the potential effects. Our community has always been an intricate balance of wildlife, environment, agriculture, and community. Please protect this established harmony with our community. So many essentials are at stake: prime farmland, a unique river system and estuary, feeding grounds for migratory tundra, highly organic soil. North Carolina is the second in the nation for green energy facility after California and has met the required green credit. It is not a requirement to give up the prime farmland for other states to garner their green credits. Please place this project under moratorium until more studies are done and a surety bond is issued for the protection of our county and neighboring properties from an LLC that will possibly not be even be in existence in 20 years and will guarantee protection for the citizens of Beaufort County. Thank you, Mayor, very much for your time.
Thank you. Last, Fred.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here tonight to express my concerns with the newly amended solar facility in the Terracaya area. I respectfully request that you place the Wilkerson Solar application under the current moratorium for the following reasons. As of last year, 2017, 6.64% of the electricity generated in our state was renewable, which exceeds the requirements of 4.5%. Wilkerson Solar will not serve in North Carolina in any way. We will only receive the negative impacts. Consequently, there is no need to relinquish any more of North Carolina's prime farmland to satisfy green tax credits for other states. The map I have provided you is of the PJM grid. Why should North Carolina sacrifice our farmland, our communities, our citizens, and our agricultural heritage for no benefit to our state? Agriculture is the largest economic income producer for Beaufort County. Our family's farming operation is in close proximity to the proposed 74-megawatt solar facility. We have farmed this land for over 50 years and have become very familiar with the topographical orientation and geology, as well as the hydrology of Terracaya farmlands, which is a very unique system. Terracaya's community and farmland is constructed by an artificial drainage system, which will likely present several problems if a solar facility is constructed and drainage is compromised or altered. Compromised ditches will negatively impact adjacent landowners like our, our family and others, and will cause our fields to flood and crops to be destroyed. Who will be responsible for the altered drainage, and who will hold them accountable? We, as landowners, are already levied with a tax for drainage. I am concerned about the potential changes in the water quality and how it will affect our ability to continue to farm our land. Potential wash-off of the toxic chemicals present in the solar panels could poison our water and crops. The chemical runoff will result in the contamination of our water system, creating adverse effects to the health and well-being of the surrounding farmland, wells, and overall water quality, which would ultimately harm the state's fisheries resources. Wilkerson Solar should consider their potential hydraulic trespass. Terracaya is located only five to 10 feet above sea level. Therefore, flooding and drainage are constant major issues. The ditches are currently maintained with heavy construction equipment. Wilkerson Solar has not even addressed the impact they will have on the community drainage. The proposed solar map indicates solar panels traverse in state-maintained blue-lined ditches, and I'm sure Commissioner Richardson could let you, give you a lesson on that. With no viable plan...
I won't let you finish.
With no viable plan regarding upkeep and maintenance. The threat of this land returning to wetlands is real and must be addressed. Blue-lined ditches are streams that flow for most or all the year. FEMA regulates blue-lined ditches and will not allow land within 30 feet to be disturbed. Has these FEMA permits been obtained? The next map is taken from the water quality in the Albemarle Pamlico Peninsula, done by the US Geological Survey. Contaminants that wash off the solar panels in this area can seep into the soil and be subsurface materials where the groundwater is located. Testing should be completed to ensure that nothing leaks or runs off into this area affecting the water supply. I request groundwater monitoring prior to the installation of the project and throughout the duration of the site's existence. In the case of significant findings, I demand Wilkerson Solar to be held responsible and to rectify the situation. Thank you very much for your time and your interest.
Thank you. We're down to items for presentation. The first one is Lisa. The Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Week, and also the Week of the Young Child.
Okay. I can't, can't get rid of the office.
I can't get rid of the office piece. So while she's talking on our technical business. Thank you again. This is, you know, every year we come, it's Children's Month, the month of April, and so I brought Laurel Miller with me and Melanie Corpru from DSS because child abuse prevention is certainly a very important topic. So, and we thank you for already signing the proclamation. So just to let everybody know what you said, Laurel, if you want to read.
This is the Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2018. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life as well as being our most vulnerable assets, whereas children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the future and current quality of life to a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their fullest potential, whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, and healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon the citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and other elected leaders and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in Beaufort County adopted this night, day of April 2018, in Beaufort County, North Carolina. And on Wednesday, the 11th, so two days from now, at 9:00 AM at DSS, we'll be planting our pinwheel garden in front out under the flag. So everyone's invited to come and plant a pinwheel and join us for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the other proclamation is the Week of the Young Child. And so I'm going to read that proclamation. Whereas the Beaufort Heart Partnership for Children and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 15th through 22nd, 2018. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Beaufort County, North Carolina, and whereas childcare providers, teachers, parents, and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Beaufort County, North Carolina deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public bodies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Beaufort County NC, do hereby proclaim April 15th through the 22nd as Week of the Young Child in Beaufort County, North Carolina, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood. So those are the two proclamations that we ask you, brought to you. What I also want to bring to you and you should have in your folders is what is happening the week of Week of the Young Child in the childcare facilities. I'm hoping I can make this work because what we bring new and different to you this time is this young man that has taken the book, Oh, the Places You Go, by Dr. Seuss, and he's rapping to it, much like Ludacris, if you ever go on YouTube, and he's doing Llama Llama Red Pajama because children get their love of books from many and varied resources. And so we're hoping that this maybe will touch some children. Okay. So I don't know. So I guess I will say to you then, if you've got the piece of paper, you can go on our website and listen to it. This young man is, he's a freshman at Lewisburg, and he's done it very well, and we're really excited to have that piece that we've not had before. What I do want to invite you to, my final pitch, is that we'd love it if you would come to the parade this year. The parade is going to be April the 26th. We used to have it during Week of the Young Child, but because Week of the Young Child, even though it's a national celebration, they like to rotate it. So sometimes it's in different weeks during the month. So we decided we need to stabilize that date that we have the parade and the festivals. So it will be April the 26th. Lineup is about 9:45 in front at the Washington Festival Park, and we'll walk down Stewart Parkway, down Main Street, and back around Bonner, back to Festival Park. You know, you won't walk very far because we're talking about little kids. But to stand up for children, to show your support that it's important, our children are important, and you're there to cheer them on would be greatly appreciated. So I have brought you the official invitation. And so I appreciate this opportunity to be able to come before you once again and ask you to please accept our proclamations officially for the record.
Any questions of Lisa? Any volunteers for the parade?
All of you.
We will see.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have the younger ones there.
Okay.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, and we've already signed each one of us a proclamation. Do we need a motion, Katie? Can we do both of them at the same time? All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Busio and a second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. That was unanimous. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you, thank you. See y'all on the 26th.
Next on the agenda is Jason and Wayne. Both of you speaking or are you going to do the speaking?
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners and county officials. I'm Jason Pear, president of the Greater Bath Foundation, and I really appreciate the time to be able to speak with y'all tonight. In a couple of years past, I've come to y'all around the same time to talk to y'all about events that we're trying to promote in Bath, and we started with the First Port Celebration in 2016, and it worked out really well. And last year, we decided to have our second Memorial Day Celebration, and we had the Embers, and we probably had close to about 4,500 people come. It was a great event. It was a very family-friendly event. I think at the end of the night, we probably filled one trash bag full of trash. So it was a great event. And the reason I'm coming to talk to y'all about this tonight is that I know y'all have heard a lot about, we've had different 300th anniversaries of different things, but we actually have a anniversary this time that's probably going to be our area's last and a long-time 300th anniversary, which is the celebration of the life and death of Blackbeard the Pirate. And actually, this is not just a local event, this is actually a nationwide event with the publicity. There is actually a festival in Ocracoke that happens around the latter part of October. It started about seven, eight years ago that has done pretty well. Mr. Willard went last year, they probably had 13,000 to 14,000 people at this event, where they had the pirate ships, and they had the reenactors, and they had the speaking. It was just a great, great big event. It's huge for tourism for the area. Well, this year, we have an opportunity to be able to seize the option, to be able to help Beaufort County with a big tourism aspect. Between Beaufort, North Carolina, Ocracoke, and Bath are going to be our three main big areas that you're going to have people coming all over, not just the nation, but the world come if we put on this celebration. Just this weekend, we had about five travel riders. We had one from Switzerland, we had one from Canada, one from London, and two from New York, one with the New York Times, who had gone to Beaufort, had gone to Ocracoke, and come back to Bath, and also visited the museum and our state historic site that we actually have by there. And they are with Visit NC, and Visit NC is a huge promoter for tourism for North Carolina. So they are really hyped up about promoting this for not just Bath, but for Washington, Bellhaven, and all of our areas here. So what we're doing this year is we decided to combine both events into this one big 300th celebration, which we're going to continue to our third annual Memorial Day Celebration, which we had the Embers going to come back, we're going to do our fireworks again. We've actually got a shatter player group who's going to have about eight to 10 professional sword fighters are going to come and make a presentation during that time. But our big event is actually going to happen in October, which is the middle of October, it's going to be on the 19th and the 20th. One of the reasons why we are choosing that time is because we have, right now on the books, we have three pirate ships that are going to be coming. They're actually, we're going to have them the weekend before Ocracoke because we've been working with Ocracoke. They're almost at 90% max capacity already. They were actually wrote up in the Smithsonian Magazine as one of the top three places to visit for big celebrations. So actually, they're running out of people. So actually, the people they cannot have over there, they're going to come over here and be in Beaufort County and visit. So one of the big things there, we've got three pirate ships coming. We have got a band from Disney World coming. We've got reenactors from Disney World, Virginia, and South Carolina coming for a big presentation. We're going to have probably 70 to 100 vendors. This is just going to be a one-time event. We're going to do a presentation the night before at our local turnage here at downtown Washington, where we're going to have sponsors or a reception and a ticketed event. But actually, for that, we're going to have, it's going to be, you know, option with tickets and also for our sponsorships like we did in 2016. So we've got a big presentation for that. So there's lots of great things. We've been talking with Woody Jarvis, with Bellhaven, and Lynn Wingate with Washington, and they're all pumped up about it. And I think this one time, this isn't just for Bath, this is for Beaufort County. And, you know, I think this is a one-time deal that would go in the history books that will be for it. So Beaufort does it every year with the pirate invasion, but one of the cool things, we actually got, you know, cannon recreators are going to bring real cannons, and when the pirate ships come into Bath, we're actually going to have a live sea battle. We'll have the cannons on site firing back at the ships, and the ships firing back at the port, and people flying from the mast, and all the drama and all the stuff goes on with it. So what I'm here today is that in the past, you know, couple of years, the Commissioners and the county has actually helped us with our event, and this year, since we have two events, it was my request to see if the county would be willing to want to put $10,000 for these two events, which would be for three different areas, which would be widely promoted through WITN, radio stations, newspapers, the whole thing to bring people to Beaufort County. So my request is that, to see if y'all would entertain that, and I look for any kind of comments or anything about that.
Yes, Commissioner Brand. Yes.
Has Bath thought about how much revenue it's going to bring, this festival will bring into the Bath Township?
Well, one of the big things in the Bath Township, we're trying, all the money that we raise right now is going to go back to the, is going to the town. Our town has a real big issue with the wastewater system, and we're trying right now to use that money to help them. We actually helped them with a $200,000 grant, and that will probably just cover a quarter of what it will take to fix it from the 1.2 million that was designed to make it, and it doesn't work. So it's going to take, with this, it's going to take probably about $100,000 to put this event on and do it right. And when we did it in 2016, we had about 12,000 left over that we wrote a check for to the town and helped them buy some things for the town. So this year, the way we're promoting, we want to at least double that, but also you got to think about the restaurants in Bellhaven, restaurants here. One thing is that it's hard. I wish we had more hotels because there's lots of places that are asking about where to stay, and we're trying to get them with bed and breakfasts in Bellhaven and other things, but, you know, like that, they're running out, so they're either going to have to go to Greenville, other areas, and then come back.
And my other thing, Mr. Chairman, is Brian, did we agree or did we vote on a $5,000 donation to each one of the municipalities at the retreat? Or did we discuss that?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
We have in a tourism budget, and the county manager has the authority to spend up to $1,000 for each event, and we've done that on two events year-to-date. So your big event really is in October that you're...
Big event is in October, yes. We will be doing our fireworks display for both events, for both of them. And, you know, the fireworks do cost money, and I've seen there's other fireworks events that have traveled on and come on, but that's not really just the main thing about it, is that it's really geared for promoting Beaufort County and getting people to here. So the big event is in October, but it's going to take all of it, to make all of it happen, with the down payments, the money we've already raised so far, which we got to book the ships and everything else, as far as that goes. And we're actually saving about $10,000 from getting the ships because they're already going to Ocracoke the weekend before. So one's coming from Virginia, which is an exact replica of Blackbeard's ship that's actually being made. We have a, and the Spotswood Society, which is a very respected organization in Virginia, is actually coming on Friday, the 19th, to actually have their annual meeting at the turnage. So that's one of the reasons why we did this with the turnage, too, was bring more people from out of town, too.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. As you just mentioned, we authorize that of tourism by the $1,000 donations, and the county manager has that authority, correct?
Yes.
And what they're presenting out under the Items for Presentation, which means we couldn't at this point in time give any money to them if they're asking us for additional money because it's not on the decision part of the agenda. So the best bet may be to just talk to the county manager.
Well, this falls into next year's budget. We can take it up as a part of the budget for next year.
It's in your October. Now, the May, I would suggest that you talk with Brian, and if you can work something out, otherwise, we'll put it on Items for Decision for that event at our next meet. But we will give it consideration in the 2019 budget, the October.
Okay. All right, that was good. Yes, sir, yeah. Mr. Will, I'd like to say something just real quick.
A few little things Jason left out. One of the things that we are going to do is we're going to try to set the Guinness Book of World Records for having the most number of Blackbeards at one spot. One thing that is going to make international news is the fact that we are going before the legislature, the state legislature, to get Blackbeard and all of his men a pardon. We are going to have the direct descendants of Governor Spotswood, who was the governor of Virginia, that sent his men down here to kill Blackbeard, which they did. And also, we have the descendants of the pirates that came from Bath, which will be there to accept their pardons, and also Governor Spotswood's descendants, they're also going to be there. And when we have these two ships come in, it will be a live cannon fire. The actors will be mic'd. When you're on the shore, you'll be able to hear every word Blackbeard is saying. It'll be a big theatrical production. So anyway, it's going to be some great entertainment.
And one of the reasons about the pardon, one of the reasons about the pardon that Wayne was talking about was in 1718, you know, Blackbeard actually had a pardon. There's actually a copy of the pardon over in England, getting it, a copy of it. That's one of the reasons, you know, when Governor Spotswood, I call hired the hit for Blackbeard, he illegally actually went down to capture Blackbeard. And one of the big things about it, that's one reason why, that when they actually ambushed Blackbeard, got his crew, took him back to Virginia... Blackbeard, got his crew, took him back to Virginia for trial, the pardon actually had arrived. That's why most of the crew was able to leave. One of the man's name was last name Howard, which went on to buy most of Ocracoke, which that's where Howard's Pub and the other areas came from. So there's been a lot of history about it. But the New York Times and other people are really getting hopped up about this. So we'd like, that's why we want Beaufort County to be on the forefront.
And Vale Rung is a...
A Blackbeard.
No, I didn't say that. Of one of the bad boys.
Yep.
Be a bad girl.
Is she going to get pardoned?
I think, I think she's going to accept the pardon.
Oh, okay, okay.
Commissioners, we really appreciate it, but thank you for your time, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Next item on the agenda is the Trillium Annual Report Day.
Thank you for having me this evening, Mr. Chair. While she pulls this up, I first want to thank Commissioner Langley, thank you.
Mr. Seer.
All right, thanks. Who's on our regional advisory board, but he also chairs our regional advisory board, and he's done an excellent job in that over the past two and a half years. I'd also like to thank Jim Matson, who's on our regional advisory board. And last month, he just got appointed up to our governing board for an empty seat up there. So thank you, Jim, for offering to do that, so. And this is our annual report. This is the third year I've been in front of you all, so if you have questions, please feel free. So our mission here is transforming lives of people in need by providing ready access to quality care. This seems like a really simple mission, but its efforts are difficult at times. And as you know, as a managed care organization, we have been facing continuous changes. We've had a great deal of budget cuts over the past several years. We're also required to follow all the statutes and rules of the federal government and Medicaid reform. And so in that process, we've tried to make some changes ourselves. So on November 15th, we took a big step and started a coalition with two other managed care organizations in the state, Alliance Behavioral Health and VIA. Alliance is Wake, Johnson, Cumberland, and Durham Counties. And VIA is the 23 counties on the other end of the state. And so Trillium makes up 25 counties on the eastern part of the state, so we have 52 counties representing in this alliance. And if you're interested, take a, take a look at advancingncwholehealth.com website for that information. Let me make it clear, this is not a merger. This is a partnership. Because the state is starting to move into this tailored slash standard plan. And what that means is basically that we are taking, the legislators are taking a look at how to somewhat privatize our industry, and we have to partner with a private insurance company. And I will say, if, in order for us to do that, we want to make sure that a private insurance company can handle the individuals that are low risk while we answer the calls at 3:00 in the morning with someone getting ready to commit suicide. And that's what we do, okay? So with that being said, I want to make sure folks are aware of that's on the table. And if you hear about tailored or standard plans and you have questions, please feel free to give me a call. Who we were last year, we were 24 counties, stretching from Virginia to South Carolina, total population of 1.26 million, about 185,000 Medicaid eligibles, about 13% of the total population of both Medicaid enrollees also. And as you can see, 11,451 square miles bigger than Maryland, okay? Widely vary in population. Many of you know Tarrell County, smallest county in the state, 38, 3900 people, up to New Hanover County, which is the eighth largest county in the state. July 1 last year, Nash County decided that they wanted to separate themselves from another managed care organization and join us because of the good things that we've been doing in the eastern part of the state. So Nash County joined us. It increased our population almost by 100,000 and our Medicaid eligibles by about 10,000. What's interesting about this piece of data is, you remember the 13% total population and 13% Medicaid enrollees? Now we're up to 16% Medicaid enrollees, a lot of Medicaid-eligible individuals in Nash County, total population of 25 counties. But you may have heard recently that Columbus County also wants to separate from that MCO and join us. They went through the nine-month process to get it approved by the county, and the county managers and the county commissioners are 100% behind that. They've sent it over to our board. Our board approved of that, but it has to be approved by the Secretary of DHHS. She approved that about a month ago. And so July 1, Columbus County will be joining us, and we'll be 26 counties. Every year, we do an annual gaps and needs analysis, and we get this data from a variety of sources, national data, state data, county data, community data. We take a look at surveys by participants and stakeholders. We look at complaints and grievances, and we also do geo-mapping. We have a process where folks can get online to do surveys. We'll do hard copy surveys. We do onsite work with our consumer family advisory committees, which are consumers that are served out there, are the CFACS, and our boards. We will be presenting this questionnaire to our board members to make sure that they give input on how we are doing in our gaps and needs. So our current statistics, we served 52,650 people last year, 79% with a primary diagnosis of mental health needs. And let me make sure I preface this. Trillium oversees, okay, at the bottom here, 430 some odd providers. We don't provide direct services. We contract about with 400 agencies to do that. 19% with substance use disorders and 9% with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Total cost for those services, $355 million, okay? Some of our priorities this past year was making sure we're improving our customer services. We want to make sure we're doing evidence-based practices. We want to strengthen the use of our technology. We want to make sure that we are having local community relationships. And I, one example, as some of you in the room know, I serve on the BC 360 Committee and participate in that meeting every month. And that's part of trying to make sure we're staying local, okay? We also have community collaboratives occurring in Beaufort County every month. We also want to ensure that we have a consistent level of functioning across all of our departments. One of the big topics is everybody's been hearing about, and I was, I attended your all's opioid meeting that you had several months ago. The state allocated $31 million, oh, sorry, the feds allocated $31 million to the state. $31 million's needed to get dispersed for a two-year grant to deal with the opioid crisis. So our first year's allocation for our 25 counties was 1.2 million. After this second year, that money just goes away, okay? But I think one of the messages that the state wants to give to the feds is how bad the opioid issue is in North Carolina, all right? So in that first year, this was for new individuals needing to get opioid treatment, all right? Within the first six months, we spent our 1.2 million. It was supposed to be for a year, okay? That's how bad it is in the eastern part of the state. If you look at the map of the opioid deaths, okay, eastern part of the state and western part of the state are really bad. We served approximately 1,269 individuals. We, because it is so bad in the eastern part of the state, the state held on to some of that 31 million in the first year, and they reallocated another $1.8 million to Trillium, okay, to spend before April 30th. That was in January, and it will be spent because we have a lot of folks that are needing that service, okay? The service, and as the opioid forums have been rolling out, you've seen that they've been addressing education, prevention, and treatment. So some of the initiatives for, that Trillium has been doing to address the opioid issue is we have a contract with the Healing Transitions, which is a recovery facility, 200-bed recovery facility in Raleigh. We've had 354 admissions last year, and we continue to have folks going to Raleigh for that service. It's a long-term recovery place. Oxford houses, we have 242 people that are, that are being served in sober living homes, and these are also for women and children. The north, we have a contract with the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, where they disseminate, and law enforcement would be very familiar with this, they disseminate naloxone kits to prevent overdose. And we had 2,245 naloxone kits distributed through our 25 counties. We also have wellness cities in Greenville, Wilmington, and New Bern, which provide a peer support services. So some of the things that we've been doing in advancing our technology, I'm just going to mention one of these because of time. I'll point out Crisis Chat. As many of you know, kids these days don't talk. All they do is text, okay? So what we have done is we have an app now. If kids are feeling like they need to talk to somebody, we have a provider that has that app linked directly to them, and they can talk to anybody at any time of day or night. It's just an app, and that's how they talk now. I'm not feeling well, I'm feeling like I'm getting bullied in school, or getting picked on, or feeling suicidal. They have licensed clinicians to deal with that, all right? So that's one of the ways that we've been making sure that we're advancing our technology aspect of mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. So some of our reinvestment plan outcomes, this was from our savings that we used to have. And if you remember, last year, you signed a proclamation supporting us for trying to get our money back. Well, these are one of the, some of the things that we've spent the money on. We did not get our money back. And the second thing that you all supported us was, if we weren't going to get our money back, don't cut us again. They did cut us again. The third thing in that proclamation, though, that we did get support on was, take a look at how much money Trillium has reinvested back into the community compared to the other managed care organizations. And so our cut was the lowest cut of any of the other MCOs. But it was still, over four years, $53 million, okay? We have after-school programs with Respite. We've done accessible playgrounds, as many of you know, down by the water with that playground was funded by Trillium. We've done evidence-based practices with, with that money. And one of the things I'll point out here is you had compassion reaction in your schools, which was Rachel's challenge. If you remember, Rachel was one of the very first individuals that was killed in Columbine, and we had that program put into a lot of the Beaufort County schools. So, and you can see, we have a variety of other activities that we've done over the past year. Last is, here's the number of consumers that have been served in Beaufort County, 2,773 individuals. Individuals of primary diagnosis of mental health has been 2,131. Primary diagnosis of substance use has been 652. And a primary diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disabilities has been 268. And those numbers do not add up to 2,773 because some of these individuals have dual diagnoses, okay? And now I'd be willing to answer any questions, or try to.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things.
Ah, yes, Mr. Brandt.
When you, when you're talking about that chat hotline, tell me a little bit about how that works. So after they finish chatting, do they, will they go get treated, or do you try to figure out over the phone whether they need treatment or not?
Yeah, and that's exactly what will happen. So the biggest implementation piece of having just that chat line is more on the prevention side, okay? If it can prevent them from escalating a month down the road and then going to the ED and then really exploding, and getting somebody, some resources, someone to talk to, that's how it's set up. And so we'll, we'll try to set that up for the...
The other thing was, that $31 million that was given to the state of North Carolina for, is that money earmarked for opioid abuse?
Only for opioid abuse.
Okay, and this, and this all divvied out by grant?
This is all divvied out in a two-year grant across the state, okay? And I've seen the numbers of the other MC, managed care organizations, and that's why we got another 1.8 million, because it went very quickly in the eastern part of the state because it's pretty bad.
Mr. Evans.
These kids with developmental disabilities, how do you get them to your location? Are, is a lot of them in wheelchairs? Do the parents bring them? Do you send a specialized vehicle, ask them, how do, how do they get to your facility?
So there's a variety of ways. A lot of services with, with individuals with developmental disabilities have services at their home, okay? So it's not a, but we also do have facilities that, that can treat those individuals and work with those individuals. And so transportation, I think, is one of the things you're asking about, is not in our budget. But what providers can do that do provide those services may be able to take some of that cost and to provide transportation. But it's not on, it's not in our budget package to do that. And so, but there's a lot of those individuals that get services at their house, where that wouldn't be necessary.
So you can't go mobile, you can go to the individuals?
Yes, a, a majority of our services, across all three disability groups, happen in, happen in our homes. Yep.
So you also get an opportunity to, to see what's going on in that household?
Yes, yes. One of the projects that had Child First up there, Child First is an evidence-based practice for kids one to six years old where a traumatic event has occurred. And with all the opioid issues happening out there, this is where a licensed clinician and, no one likes me to use the word, but a case manager goes into the house and starts dealing with them on the treatment side. And also, are you getting to, you know, the social services offices for services? Are you, are you needing support with education or schooling, that type of thing? So we do a lot of that in the, in the home.
How about psychiatrists? I mean, I understand there is just a desperate need.
Yes, we have very few.
Okay.
Yes, there's a national and state and local shortage of psychiatrists.
Commissioner Langley.
Okay, I just want to make sure that a lot of folk understand something that you said. When he, when he talked about the money for the opioid, he said new. And I want you to understand that people who already have that substance abuse problem, that grant money is not for them. I just want everybody to understand that it's only for brand-new people who get hooked on opioids. And then the other thing with the reinvestment money, when the state cut the funding, there was going to be a 200-bed facility built in Pitt County, but the legislature took the money. And so, and you know when someone decides one day, I can't take it anymore, and I'm ready to do something about my situation, and then we have to tell them, there's nowhere for you to go. So that was a great travesty that this legislature has done. And you, you really need to fuss and complain because people's lives are being destroyed every single day. Money is not always the only thing. That's one of the things with, with governance is, you have to understand, when you're in governance, the money is attached to people and services.
Mr. Buzziak.
Mr. Peterson, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Of the people you're treating, do you know what percentage are on heroin addiction and what percentage are on pills addiction?
No, but one, one of the things I will say is there has been... No, but one of the things I will say is there has been a national decline in the prescriptions written because everybody's starting to hear about it. But what has happened is, and most of the individuals that were on the opioids have gone over to the heroin side. And so, one of the things that we want to make sure is really clear is that whatever industries have been involved in this need to see it all the way through, that, okay, they're on heroin now, they're not our problem because we got them off the opioids.
That's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, yeah.
What about the deaths, mostly from heroin mixed with fentanyl?
There's a lot of those, yes. Yeah, but it's also opioids.
That I know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? The number that you gave us, the number of consumers served in Beaufort County, that's 6% of our population.
Yep, and that's about the average prevalence rate that we have in our industry. It ranges from 6% to 7%.
And to follow up on Commissioner Langley, if our sheriff's office picks up somebody at 2:00 in the morning that's on the side of the highway, passed act, and they get there and realize that they have the problem that we were discussing, this facility in Greenville would allow us to take that person directly there and not put them in the detention center here in Washington.
Correct.
Beaufort County.
Correct.
And that's the real heartbreaker in this. So, thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the Wilkinson Solar Farm. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My clients who are property owners and residents in Terracya are extremely concerned about the Wilkinson Solar facility. Of course, you've heard a lot of residents from that area, not necessarily my clients, but residents from that area speak to that issue earlier. But I think part of that conversation indicates something that's not getting out there information-wise, and that is, there's a concern out there in the community that the Wilkinson Solar facility is somehow grandfathered in and not part of the moratorium. And of course, the moratorium explicitly says, "None of this is to be considered. No permits or other action on any solar facility until November." So that language certainly encompasses every solar facility, which would include Wilkinson Solar. I think a lot of the confusion comes from some comments about grandfathering in facilities that were already looking at various projects in some of the earlier discussions. And of course, your moratorium only impacts county decision-making, it doesn't impact state decision-making, which I think is another source of confusion because your moratorium doesn't stop the state from going through their process. So I think it would be helpful for all concerned and clear the air if the county could take some action, some statement to clarify that in people's minds, that this moratorium does affect all solar facilities through November until you come up with your new ordinance. As far as the overall issue, the issue really is property rights and really conflicts in property rights. And of course, in property rights, you have to look at two sides of the coin. You want to allow people to do as much as is possible on their own property, of course. But the other side of the coin is when that starts impacting their neighbors and their neighbors' property rights, there has to be a balance. And of course, in law, that has been called nuisance law, which goes back to medieval England. And that basically says that when you do something on your property that impairs your neighbor's property values and their peaceful and quiet enjoyment of their own property, they have a right to go to court and sue you to abate the nuisance. Have the court issue an order saying that those activities will either stop or they'll be conducted under circumstances that the court directs. What I think the commission has done that's a great service for everybody is to start looking at this particular nuisance, and I would submit that solar facilities are a nuisance. And try to come up with a common sense plan that really addresses that and allows these facilities to exist, but under circumstances that they do not impair the neighbor's property rights. And I certainly commend the commission for its actions in looking into that and coming up with a good ordinance that will strike this balance. Striking that balance, of course, prevents the courts from getting into it because if you come up with a solid ordinance with all of the moving parts that need to be there, there's no reason for anybody to have to go to court to abate the nuisance. Now, I think there's an interesting article, which I'll pass out to you when I'm finished, from the Toronto Sun addressing renewable energy in the province of Ontario and what has happened up there with it. Of course, there's some things like electric rates being driven through the roof that have happened everywhere that renewable energy has been used extensively. But I think the part that affects Beaufort County and is a parallel to what's going on here was that article speaks to the fact that you've had these companies come in, big international companies, and gone into various property owners and done deals with them, and then suddenly you have this project, it's a fait accompli, and the neighbors are sitting there with adverse effects on their property, not being able to do anything. And, you know, they point out that this is really not something you need to blame on these owners that see dollar signs. They really didn't nothing wrong so much as it is the companies that come in and the way government handles it. And I think the way this board is handling this issue is a far cry from the way Ontario handled it. So again, I commend you on that. Now, of course, I also spoke about how that created a lot of divisions within rural communities in the province of Ontario. Now, you also have the property rights of the people who are leasing property. And again, there's a situation where there are two sides to that coin. On one hand, these people are getting money, and of course, they want to get money. But on the other, their own land may be damaged by this process. So they may unknowingly be hurting their own property interests in entering into these leases. Now Wilkinson Solar is a mega project, will have a tremendous impact. It's something that Beaufort County has not seen in the past on that scale. So this is one that you particularly needed a good, solid ordinance to deal with. I would submit there are a number of issues that need to be dealt with in this ordinance. One is contamination of the land and the groundwater. One of the things that occurred in Ontario, and I don't think the people that were building these facilities anticipated it, but in the wind sector, when they put down these big anchors into the ground, the way that was done really adversely affected the groundwater in such a way that it's been called toxic sludge and not usable for a lot of purposes. And nobody anticipated that, but it happened. Here in North Carolina, I think the issue is more Gen X with the solar panels. And of course, the EPA has come out, and I'll pass that article out too as well from the North State Journal, EPA has come out and identified solar panels as a possible source of Gen X contamination in the groundwater. Not only Gen X, but other related harmful contaminants. So I would submit that one very important part of your ordinance ought to be testing wells. As somebody suggested in public comments, you need to have these wells to look at the composition of the groundwater before the projects go in, and then to monitor it periodically. That way, if you start seeing some of this contamination with Gen X or anything else, you can get in and get ahead of the curve and take whatever action needs to be taken before it gets really bad. So I submit that's a very important part of the ordinance you need to look at. Another important aspect is buffering because these things are eyesores. People don't like looking out their back door and seeing them, or driving down the road and seeing them. And particularly buffers from residential areas, schools, and other occupied buildings. These need to be substantial enough that people don't have to sit there and have them right up next to them. Some counties, I think, have gone as much as 1,000 feet, which I would submit is reasonable. Another issue that's very important in terms of maintaining accountability is bonding these facilities. Now, you've got these big international companies, the one that's coming here with Wilkinson Solar is, has its American headquarters in Chicago. Very wealthy companies, they could put up bond money just from corporate assets if they needed to. But instead, they organize these things as LLCs, throwaway organizations. If they have a problem with liability, they just shuffle it off. And you end up with an entity with no assets of any value and a lot of liabilities, and these big companies just walk away. So there needs to be bonds, and bonds that follow the project. Because the other thing that goes on with these projects is they'll start with one LLC, and they'll get all their tax credits and stuff, and then they'll hand it off to another one. By the time it's gone through its useful life, it might have gone through five or six or seven LLCs. And it ends up with one that has no assets but worn-out solar panels. And then we get ready to decommission the things, and there are problems, there's nobody there, and somebody else gets caught holding the bag on that. That might be the landowner that leased the property, that might be local government, it might be state government, but somebody else is going to pay the piper. And that's the whole idea of the way they set these things up with LLCs. Bonds would prevent that because then you've got a source of money. Saying, "You've got an environmental problem that needs to be cleaned up, here's the source of money to clean it up." So I think it's very important that a solid bonding provision be set up for these facilities. And of course, that needs to be done before a mega facility is even thought about. Because we do not want that falling on county taxpayers, or for that matter, on the people that have leased property for these facilities, or on the adjoining landowners. Now, of course, another issue that I think this board should be commended on is trying to do something about the tax unfairness. You've got these huge corporations with lots of money coming in here, building facilities, and then under state law, getting an 85% exemption on their county and city taxes if they're in a city limits. It's not right and not fair for hard-working citizens of Beaufort County that are struggling to pay their own taxes to have to subsidize these big out-of-state corporations. And this board has taken a stand on that, and hopefully the legislature will listen to you. There are a few other counties that have taken that stand with you. Now, getting beyond the local issues, of course, some people here have touched on the cost of solar. But just to cite a couple of examples of what that does economically, Germany pays over three times for electricity what we do, and that's because of the energy vending or energy transition that Merkel put in. The architect of that plan has just recanted and said, "It's a bad idea, it's making Germany not a good place to conduct industry, to create jobs because the costs are too high." Australia just had one of their states that had put in a tremendous amount of renewable energy and called itself the superpower of renewable energy. That was South Australia. In doing that, they created the highest residential electric rates in the world for their citizens. And the government that did that was just thrown out of power in an election last month because of that issue. The election was called a referendum on renewable energy, and renewable energy lost. So there are a lot of issues to look at here. I would submit the county is on the right path in terms of looking at a solid ordinance. I think you're on the right path in addressing the tax problem, and I just hope that you will follow through on that to come up with an ordinance that will protect the property rights of the citizens here in Beaufort County. Certainly, I think you'll have a lot of support of citizens behind you on this, and I just hope you will follow through and do what, follow through on what you started with. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Rader?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. The, I thought that when Wilkinson Solar agreed to the buffers and that there was a settlement with the school and that there were no more issues having to do with Wilkinson Solar. So what, is that a true statement, that Wilkinson Solar pulled back away from the school?
Well, the school issue is one thing. There are a lot of residents up there that are still, would be looking at these solar panels right out their back door with these panels on two sides of their property or, you know, in close proximity to their property. And the buffer that was agreed to with the school doesn't help them. What's needed is a consistent buffer that's a county standard. And that also helps these companies to come in and plan where they don't have to sit there and say, "Well, what buffer am I going to need here?" They can look at the county ordinance and say, "This is the standard."
So at this point, the school is a non-issue?
Well, I don't represent the schools, I can't say that one way or the other, but from my knowledge, I think that probably is not an active issue right now, but I can't say that for a fact because they're not my client.
Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes, Commissioner Brandt.
Just to let you know, Steve, you know, I sat on the committee on the solar farm ordinance with Mr. Busiak, and we've looked at all these issues, and we've talked about them thoroughly, and we just haven't hammered everything out yet. But we're working on it, we're close, and once we get everything just exactly the way we want it, we'll bring it to the general public.
I certainly commend your actions in addressing this issue. I think it would be helpful if you could clarify the fact that all solar facilities are under the moratorium and there are no grandfathered facilities, just to keep people's minds soothed a little more. But anyway, I've got some copies here. Pass these out.
I think that the solar forms that are already in place are not under the moratorium. It's just the ones that are to be built.
To follow up on Commissioner Richardson's question, this is in the utilities, North Carolina Utilities Commission, in their minutes. It says that Terracya Christian School and Mr. Butler, Mr. Butcher withdrew their objections This was on October the 9th.
Mr. Busiak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Hopefully you can answer them if you can't, and give me some information on it. Before I ask you the question, though, in an article I was reading not too long ago, it said because of the proposed tariffs that have been put in place, or are going to be put in place, I don't think they've been taking impact yet, that a number of our US companies are stockpiling solar panels from China. And so that they will have these inexpensive solar panels ready to go. And then the other article that I was reading talked about Gen X or the fluor chemicals in these PV solar panels from China. And based upon what I've heard earlier... And based upon what I've heard earlier, and what you're talking about, that really concerns me. If this stuff is leaking in to ground, or could leak into groundwater here in the county, it could be a tremendous cost to the taxpayers of this county, unless we really get our hands on somebody. But now you're talking about these LLCs, and they keep changing. Is there anybody really there that we could go after if there's groundwater contamination?
Well, that's, that's a lot of the problem, and it really raises a question about what these companies know that they're setting up their process that way. If you compare it to Duke Power, if Duke Power builds a generating station, Duke Power owns it. All of these renewable energy companies put them off in LLCs, where they can ditch them if they have to. And that whole process raises a concern of what they know that they're not telling.
Because Duke Energy paid, is paying for all that cleanup, I believe.
Yeah.
Now, you also mentioned about, I made my note here, groundwater well testing wells. And it could be a good idea to put these testing wells in, but I do have a question. If you put a testing well in, and you start to pick up fluor chemicals in those test wells, is it too late? Is the soil already been, or a water supply already been contaminated?
It depends on how early you catch it, and certainly, that would have to be monitored very closely. Because with, with any chemical, there are levels that they're safe, and then you reach a certain, certain threshold, and they aren't. Sometimes it's a very low threshold. But hopefully, with a testing well, you can catch them while they're still at a safe level and put a stop to them.
The other thing you mentioned is about the tax abatement. And in talking to some of the legislators, my understanding is it would be extremely difficult to put in legislation, even though it's being tried, in order to do away with that tax abatement. And they're talking about maybe over a three-year or four-year period of time. But it is costing the taxpayers of this county, currently with what we have in place, hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes. Now, it does decrease with the depreciation, but right now, it's probably costing the taxpayers a penny on their tax bill, if you look at that. Anything else you could add on that?
Oh, if these big facilities come in, it'll be a lot more than that. And if you look at the tax costs, at the county level, they're bad enough, but if you get to the federal level with subsidies, I'm not sure, I'm not seeing any calculations totally in this country. But Germany, which is much smaller, has already spent a trillion euros, which is over a trillion dollars, on subsidies to Wind and Solar. And it ended up with electric rates three times what ours are, plus blackouts and brownouts. It's a fairly regular occurrence there now.
Well, I want to thank you for your comments, and I want to thank the people earlier that made their comments. A concern I do have is tourism is a major, has a major impact on this county, and a lot of that is because of the water we have. And if we do have contamination of our water supply, it could have a major impact on this county in a tremendous way. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Steve. We're going to take a 10-minute break?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, but for clarification, Mr. Rader's comment, you may ask the county attorney to again give you his opinion, which he's given this board regarding Wilkinson Solar.
Okay. David?
It's excluded, and that's where we started with this.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, David? I could barely understand.
We're all up here in depth.
My understanding was that the Wilkinson Solar was excluded from the moratorium. It is not included as part of the moratorium, because of where they were in their, in the process.
It was permitted before, before the moratorium came in, to a fact.
Yes.
The terminology that was used, that they were vested in the project.
Yes.
If I understood.
Could they deny permission?
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene, and at this time, we're down to item number six, under presentation. That's the Finance Committee update. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee did meet on Tuesday, March the 20th, at 3:00. There was one committee member present, that was Commissioner Bren. So he called the meeting to order and approved the agenda. The first item that we spoke about under old business was an update on the banking transition. I was happy to report that the transition is now complete. We have switched from Bank of America and Wells Fargo to First National Bank. The second item we spoke about was the lockbox services for the tax department. If you'll think back to your budget retreat, we submitted a proposal where we could actually not fill a vacancy in that department, and instead do a lockbox for tax payments that come in by mail, and save approximately $34,000 a year by doing that. So we are moving forward with implementing that. I actually had a meeting earlier today, this morning, with banking representatives to start that process. Under new business, we spoke about the audit contract for this current fiscal year. It is that time of year again where we need to award the audit contract. There was a consensus that we contract with Jeff Best CPA of Bell Haven again to do the audit, and that's actually a decision item later tonight, for you to make a decision on there. The travel expenses for the board and the county manager were reviewed for the previous three months. And then the final thing we spoke about was the water district consolidation. This was also another proposal that we spoke about at the budget retreat. If you'll remember back, we would like to consolidate all seven districts under, under one system, and we think that we'll be able to achieve that through an operating agreement. And that's also an item that we'll really delve in, into detail much later in the agenda tonight, make a decision on that. The next Finance Committee meeting is on Tuesday, June the 19th, at 3:00 PM, right here in this meeting room. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Anita. Any questions of Anita? Okay, we're down to the items for consent. Is there any one of these items that would, that you would like to pull for further discussion?
I'd like to pull item number three, the sheriff's vehicle, that's being proposed for surplus.
Okay.
And, you know, yeah, we might as well pull item number four, which is the sheriff's item having to do with all of these computers and stuff that's being disposed of at one time. I wasn't, well, we'll talk about it when the time's right.
Okay. So we'll pull item, item three and four.
Right.
Any, any other items? If not, entertain a motion to approve the other items for consent. Got a motion by Commissioner Langley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous, thank you. We're down to items for discussion, the status update, transfer of the hospital trust funds, and the legal expenses. Commissioner Richardson.
Oh, okay. The articles of dissolution are going to come up next in this particular, on this particular item, so we can do both of these together, I think would be better.
Okay.
Rather than me making my comments on this particular item.
All right, we'll move to item number J, items for decision, and the first one here is the dissolution of the Beaufort Regional Health Center system. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, October 25th of 17, the Hospital Authority Board voted to dissolve the Hospital Authority Board, and at a regular meeting on December the 4th of 17, the Board of County Commissioners also voted to dissolve that board. Attached, you have articles of dissolution for the hospital board. They have been reviewed by the county attorney. They are now available to execute and be filed with the Secretary of State. The next step after that, if the board approves that, would be to coordinate with the hospital authority to have the remaining funds dispersed and transferred to the reserve account established by the board.
Okay, any questions?
B, I don't see the, the actual articles for dissolution. I didn't, I didn't get those with my, all I got's page 108.
Page 109.
Page 109.
That's the dissolution article?
Yes, sir.
That's what'll be filed with the Secretary of State.
Then the plan of dissolution is to, all right, the, looking at, going back in this and looking at procedures, the first resolution that was brought by the Board of County Commissioners for dissolving the hospital board was rescinded, or appealed, or whatever you want to use for that. Did we pass another one after that?
You took action on December the 4th. The board took action on December the 4th to approve, to dissolving the board.
On December the 4th of 2017?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that was reflected, the attorney reviewing that for us, reviewed the minutes and ensured that that was correct.
All right. What I would, what I would request from the clerk is that I would like copies of those, those two items that the board voted on. The one, the comments that I have to make on this particular situation is, what's happening is four and a half million dollars is being pulled down from the hospital board. This is a sad day for Beaufort County, because what it means is that the master plan that was put up by Viden several years ago is now complete. They have destroyed the Bell Haven Hospital, 50 jobs are gone from that hospital. The community has lost about $13 million a year in revenue that Beaufort County should have, and the Viden Hospital is, the hospital in Washington is leased to Viden. So we now have a single provider, and you can expect hospital costs, you can expect medical costs, because they own all the doctors, to continue to go up. When you have a single provider, you have no competition. This is a sad day. It's an outgrowth of what's known as the Affordable Care Act, or Obamacare, and it is a sad day for people in the United States, because more and more of your income is going to go to insurance companies and to hospitals for medical care, because there simply is no competition. The, the taking of the four and a half million dollars to balance this bloated budget that Beaufort County has, is a one-time deal. They're going, they're borrowing three and a half million dollars just to balance the budget this year. And when that trust fund is gone, there will be no backup for medical care in Beaufort County whatsoever. The Beaufort County Hospital is leased to Viden. Should there be an earthquake in the medical field, and there could be, and you had to actually have competition, Viden, while they have like $120 million of cash, when you look at how long they can run on $120 million, it's only about six weeks. So if there's an earthquake or something disastrous happens in medical care, Viden could wind up abandoning some of these hospitals, having to shrink, and you wind up with an empty hospital and nobody to run the Beaufort Hospital. As long as we had the four and a half million dollars in the hospital trust fund, we had a counter to Viden. And I know people run around and yell and scream, "Oh, you can't run a hospital very long on that." But you can use that money to entice another operator to come in and run the hospital. So it's a 30-year lease. If your lease is abandoned, then Beaufort County is at risk. It's a sad day that Beaufort County, because of the York County Commissioners' failure to back you up and try to keep a hospital in Bell Haven, and to try to manage, because it was poor management was the reason that we lost the Beaufort Hospital, I know because I was on the board, it was just sorry management. So it's sad that your county commissioners have hung this around your neck, and that's exactly what has happened. You're going to great risk, they're going to take the money out and spend it within the next three months, the three and a half million. And the million goes into the general fund, so it's a great example of bad government at its best.
Yes, Commissioner Brand.
First off, it was your idea to borrow the $3 million from that authority board. Yes, it was, don't sit down and tell me what.
You're trying, you're changing the whole subject.
I'm not changing nothing to it. It was your idea for us to borrow the $3 million. You said, "That's good business," is exactly what you said.
You're distorting what I just said.
And my healthcare is, is cheaper now than it's ever been.
Then you're living in la-la land.
No, I'm not.
Is there other commissioners that would like to speak?
I would say a few comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, you should correct. 4.5 million, which is transferring to the county upon dissolution of the hospital authority, is being put into a reserve account for healthcare. And yes, that fund is loaning the county $3.5 million. And the county's going to pay back on a monthly, I think, a monthly payment, plus interest. And by doing that, not borrowing the money from outside banks, we're saving the taxpayer of this county $300,000. So we have 4.5 million sitting there, we're borrowing 3.5 out of it. The county, the taxpayer will realize the $300,000 savings in interest rate, leaving us with a million dollars still directed towards healthcare. And the county has committed, in writing, that they will pay it back into that fund, so the taxpayer is not losing anything. Biden Hospital, nobody knows what's going to happen to delivery systems in this country. Everything's changing. They're getting larger and larger in order to survive. Viden's put $47 million into this hospital, so I don't think they have any intention of closing it, unless, yeah, the world blows up, healthcare disappears, then they may close across the country. But they're getting larger and larger, and they may be purchased someday or not. But they put $47 million into, all they had to do by contract, the lease agreement, was put in an emergency room, which is about 17 million, well, it was supposed to start at 7, it's up to 17 million. And they would have met the agreement, the lease agreement they had. But they've gone ahead and put in another 30,000, or $30 million, excuse me, 47 million total. 4.5 million, first of all, you could even run a hospital, where are you going to get the help from? Nobody's going to work for you, because there's no guarantee to get paid. And yes, that was on the verge of bankruptcy. If the county didn't loan them money, they would have went bankrupt because of mismanagement. Mismanagement of the hospital, and also the hospital authority back then. So the county has done the right thing, the hospital authority, which I was chairman of, based upon our attorneys, based upon our CFO, we have all our obligations, as far as anybody can tell. Why should we sit there and keep spending money? We're paying the bank to take care of the accounts, we're paying the CFO to take care of the accounts, we had legal fees, the money would just disappear. And when Biden gave us that $7 million by the contract, nobody in this county thought there'd be a dollar left at the end. But because of the hospital authority, and the previous chairman and myself, and other members of that board, and I'm not going to take any credit, other members of that board, we were able to get, save 4.5 million, which the taxpayer in this county is going to realize. And it's going to assist this county in moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Langley? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion in that we move forward with the dissolution.
All right.
With the dissolution.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote 5-1. Okay, item number two is open-door community center. And Dot, you're not.
I'm not, Dot.
Yeah.
No, Dot's on her way. She's at the city council meeting, so. I'm John Rebholzlow, and I'm with the Open Door Community Center, which is the nonprofit that's been the nonprofit that's been set up to address the growing problem of homeless women and children in Beaufort County. I think it's appropriate tonight that you name this month as child... Child... I just did it.
To make sure I get it right, because it was two of them.
Because of child.
Child abuse prevention month and the week of the young child.
Yeah. I'm here tonight to really accomplish two things. First, to review the problem with homeless women and children and its impact on the services that the county provides. And secondly, to ask that you consider correcting an error that was made in acquiring the facility at Caldwell Farm property from the county. That this structure is the structure that Open Door will use as the shelter for the homeless women and children. As you know, there are two current shelters in Beaufort County. There's Zion Shelter, which serves only men, and there's Ruth's House, which serves just victims of domestic abuse. There is no shelter for women and children. There are two that are in the plan, which is Rose Haven, which will service women veterans, and then there is Open Door Community Center to service that piece of the homeless center. First, the problem. Beaufort 360 raised the issue in late 2016. At that time, churches and DSS were seeing an increased request for assistance from homeless women. Now, let me first acknowledge that there is... There exists a stereotype of homeless people. I've been to LA and San Francisco and Chicago. You there find them in doorways and park benches and on the street. They're visible. I think it's safe to say that they're really not visible here much in Beaufort County. But that's not to say their homelessness doesn't exist. When it comes to women and their children, they try to keep a low profile, and they try desperately to protect their children. So to determine the number of homeless, we gathered information from existing organizations and churches. We compared Beaufort County to Pitt County and extrapolated the need. Beaufort County's school system has the most striking statistic. In June of 2015, they recorded 48 homeless children that were in the school system. By June of 2017, two years later, that number has risen to 124. Now, there's lots of documentation on the effect of homelessness on schools, children, and school districts across the United States. And as you can imagine, none of it's good. Ruth's House, which can only take victims of domestic violence because of their funding, received 34 calls in six months from homeless women unrelated to domestic violence, seeking shelter. DSS, in that same period of time, reported about 30 contacts. Pitt County has approximately three and a half times the size of Beaufort in population. Based on their homeless population at the Crossroads Community Shelter, which is 80 to 90 a night, Beaufort's numbers are in the 20 to 25 range. If one-third of them are women, which is what the national average is, then we have seven to eight homeless women that could use the shelter. So let me give you a recent example.
It's not fair for the people it is.
A woman and her seven children came to First Presbyterian Church about a month ago, seeking shelter. The church ended up having to pay for hotels rooms, not having to, but gladly did, to put the family up because there was no other place for them to go. And eventually, they found more permanent housing. And that's just one church with no expertise in the homeless situation. Why the problem is growing, I can't tell you. But it's not unique. A new shelter just opened in Morehead City. And DSS had almost an 18% increase last year, year over year, in people being in contact with them. What I can tell you is, after visiting 12 shelters in the surrounding counties, that the nonprofits with passionate people are best suited to handle this problem and deal with it. Your 1718 budget for the county and for DSS listed as their third goal, economically disadvantaged children, family, and adults will become appropriately self-sufficient. This is a shared goal by Open Door. Currently, when a homeless woman and her children come to DSS, they have no direct place to put them. They either end up putting them in a hotel or transporting them to another county if there's space available there. These costs are then the burden of DSS and the county. There are expenses that wouldn't be present if Open Door was open and available. And although not tracked in anything I saw in the budget, we know homelessness has a financial impact on areas like mental health agencies, emergency rooms, and school systems. School systems are in particular, since homeless children are suspended twice as often as children that come from stable home environments. And they're three times more likely to be put in special education, a significantly higher cost. So I hope this is a brief overview demonstrates that there's a need in Beaufort County and that there is a cost that the county is now absorbing because there's no group focused on this group of citizens. Now, the second reason for coming before you. In early October, the county put the property on Caldwell Farm up for sale. Open Door became aware of it, and the board authorized them to enter a bid of $57,450. Mr. Wayne Langston, who had already made a prior bid, raised the bid to $66,000. We sort of entered into a bidding war and it ended up at $82,000. At that point in time, Mr. Langston became aware of what Open Door was trying to accomplish and was going to be doing with the property. He backed out, withdrew his name from that $82,000 bid, and substituted Open Door. And we ended up buying instead of Mr. Langston. I bring all this up because the point is that if Mr. Langston had known about that, the goal and what we were going to use that for from the beginning, then he would have not continued the bid-up process, and we would have gotten it for $57,000. So Open Door respectfully requests that the board recognize that the bidding war between them and Mr. Langston artificially inflated the price that was paid. Every dollar not needed to pay for the building will allow us to renovate the building and begin to quickly serve the most vulnerable residents of Beaufort County. Therefore, as you enter into your budget process, we ask that you take this into consideration. What we're suggesting is that the difference between the $57,000 and the $82,000 be considered as a... What we would like to the county to assist us with. I know that only 50% of that actually went through the county. The other 50% went to Viden, and we will be making the same pitch to them. So any questions?
Any questions of John? So you're asking during the budget process if we'll consider...
Yes.
Putting that into the 19 budget?
Yes. Which I would think would mean that we would need to come back at that time, or is this sufficient as a request?
Nita, Brian?
We can take it as a request, but you'll need to supply additional documentation.
Right.
You have to present to the board during service expansion.
And you've already got all the documentation of the price of the building.
Oh, we do, but you'd obviously have to make that argument again.
Yeah. Yeah. So... Any other questions on the size of the problem in Beaufort County?
I think Dot did a real good job of the letter and the information that she sent. Answered a lot of my questions that I had.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I got a question for the attorney. Dave.
Yeah.
Aren't we legally bound by that bid? Or aren't they legally bound by that bid?
It seems... Yes. It seems to me that what's being requested is a... What to call it? A gift, a donation to this business. There was more than just... There were several people interested in that building. It went back and forth, up and up and up. It wasn't back and forth, it was going up. And as you know, the county owned it and had leased it to Viden. And it was sitting there unused. It was one of two buildings that were not being utilized by Viden, even though they were leasing it from the county. And the agreement was struck that those two pieces of property be sold, and that they would... They entered into an arrangement on a percentage of the purchase price going to the county and going to Viden. And it did get into a bidding war, but it was more than just Mr... I'm sorry, I didn't mention his name. And there were at least two other people that were interested in it and were bidding it up. Now, it got down to the... These last two individuals, the entity and the gentleman who was bidding on it. So I don't know how you do anything except you're going to give some money to this entity. I'm not saying you shouldn't. I'm just saying, just be aware of what you're doing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think that what they're going to have to do is come and separately ask for a donation. The upset bid process is set up by the general statutes. And when you start rebating, I don't think you can rebate money on the upset bid process. Let's look at this thing for a minute. If you were bidding for this property and somebody knew that they were going to get a rebate, they'd run the price right on up, get the property. There's something that stinks about this, isn't there? So when you use the word rebate to me, when you're asking to rebate money out of an upset bid process, that is not honest. So I think you chunk this out. And if you want to make a request for a donation, you can.
Brian?
Yes, sir. What we would view it as is a separate service expansion, just like any other agency. They are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that provides a public service that this board by law could fund themselves, which allows you, if you chose to, provide money to them. So as Commissioner Richardson said, my suggestion would be the same thing, is that they would simply submit a service expansion request in the amount of $16,000 or whatever it may be for funding support for that entity. And the board would view it just like they view all other service expansions.
I think the term rebate got used because somebody was searching for the right... For a word.
That was the wrong word. Yeah.
Refund. Mr. Bosie.
Yeah. Mr. Repholz, what do you estimate? Do you have an estimate on what it would cost to renovate that place?
It's the... We've had an engineer, new drawings, and the current estimate is right at $100,000. In response to the bidding process, my understanding, the information we have, was that absolutely we put in our initial bid. Langston and us were the only two that were in the bidding. No one else bid after that.
I can't really speak to that. That may be so. But there were several people that were bidding early on. There was a doctor's office going to go in there, was the first bid. And then I recall at least one other person bidding. She did not bid after that. And then Langston got involved with it, and then we found out interest, went back and forth. Yeah.
Thank you, John. Christina?
Yes, sir.
Approval of the technical services agreement, standby generators. And we'll let you do two in a row while you're right there.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've come to you numerous times before and discussed the providing standby power generators for some of our locations on the north side of the river in order to be able to pump water and produce water and keep the county residents having potable water during emergency situations when electricity is interrupted. This is... I've been here many times. First, we've gone through different grant application procedures. As the last time I was here, you voted to accept a $450,000 grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation. McDavid Associates prepared that grant application as well as previous grant applications. So they are extremely familiar with the project. So what I present to you today is a technical services agreement with McDavid Associates in order to prepare the design engineering to complete that project. The contract is included in your agenda book. I will tell you that this contract is consistent with the contract that we signed with McDavid Associates to design the generators on the south side of the river.
Any questions of Christina?
So what you're saying then is there was no bid process for McDavid? They were just giving it to them?
No, sir. Professional services agreements are not allowed to be bid in the state of North Carolina. But we did not do a...
It's an education.
Yeah. But we did not do an RFP process because, again, McDavid Associates is most familiar with the project. Again, it's a standard that they prepared the multiple grant applications for the county free of charge.
So when they were first given it to get familiar with it, was there a process there? There was no process?
They were not given it. They were aware of the funding opportunity, and they came to the county and said, "If this opportunity is available, would you like for us to do that?" It was discussed in the Water Committee meetings.
So they came, they became aware of the project, they got the contract, so now they get a second contract because they're aware of the first contract?
Yes, sir.
So shouldn't we, at the first time this is addressed, have more than one person come to and get familiar with it?
I agree with you, and I understand your concerns.
I bet this has been going on for three years.
It has been.
They probably... They have... I don't want to say it, but go ahead.
It has been going on. McDavid Associates has been affiliated with the water system for many, many years since it was first implemented. There have been other RFPs issued in recent years where other contracts, other engineering firms have been brought in, where it was felt by staff that other engineering firms were as capable as McDavid Associates to complete the work. Withers and Ravenel has done that. We brought in MeterSys, another, to assist us on another project. So other firms are being utilized.
Let me ask you one more question, and I'll give it back to the chairman. For the last eight years, McDavid Associates, how many millions? And the other contract is how many millions? I'd like to see numbers like that.
Well, first of all, I've only been here for five years, so I can't give you numbers back to eight. And I would say it's high. McDavid Associates, there have been... The River Crossing Project, they were the engineer. To my knowledge, McDavid Associates, and Commissioner Richardson can speak to this because he's been here for many years, as well as Commissioner Langley, that McDavid Associates has been the engineer of record for the Beaufort County Water System in the past.
And I keep hearing that, well, they have knowledge of it, so therefore we go to them. And it just keeps... Well, it's like a can rolling down a hill, and it never ends.
I hope that it's not rolling down the hill, but again, I agree with your analysis. And again, like I said, as projects have come up, when we... When staff has felt that other firms were able to step in than we have in recent years, which has been different in previous years, selected other firms to come in.
One more. There was one contract we led to them. The subcontractors didn't do their job, so they paid us a penalty. But McDavid Associates had to stay on longer, so they actually got the penalty, and we got nothing out of it. Is that going to be the same contract again?
That's not the way that happened. Mr. Chairman?
I have the floor. I have the floor.
I know that you do, I'm very much aware of that.
My recollection of that, I wouldn't word it quite the same that you did. There was a construction contract that was awarded. It was a large, it was the River Crossing Project where we pump water from the south side of the river to the north side of the river. The contractor went beyond the contracted number of days.
Now, it's supposed to be to Begall Lane.
I'm sorry?
Begall Lane.
Yes. That, that was landscaping, the final cleanup. Yes, sir. And then, that was dealing with some easements. And, again, this was, anyway. So, yes, it was, it was delayed. And then, as part of the contract, there were liquidated damages. They were assessed to the contractor. But as part, liquidated damages in the state of North Carolina, you are only allowed to-
This percentage.
Yeah, but you're only able to take liquidated damages if the owner proves a hardship. And I'm not an attorney, so I'm not using the exact word. So, you have to prove a hardship. You can't just say $500 a day and then you multiply the number of days times 500. You have to prove that there's been a loss. Well, the loss for the county was that McDavid Associates or construction inspection continued longer. And I, I wish that it had not happened that way, but it did happen that way. And I think Van Lewis with McDavid Associates gave a very long discussion at that, at a previous meeting. But, again, I, I understand your concerns and the projects that, that we feel that other firms can come in and can assist us with as readily as McDavid Associates. We are looking at other options. But these projects specifically, there was a very short deadline where they had to turn the application around very quickly. McDavid Associates has, they have all of the plans, they understand the system, they designed the system. So, they were able to produce the applications quickly in order for us to meet the grant deadlines.
One last question. That's my last question. Do we have maps or drawings of our whole water system?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, let me put this in perspective. The state puts out grants, various agencies announce grants. When they announce the grants, usually the engineering firms will come around to their clients that they have done work with for years and years. Then, they will say, "There's a grants available. If you want to try for these things, we're very familiar with the system." And usually, there's a short amount of time, as, as Christina has said, to get the grant application prepared and get it in. "Do you want us to apply?" And we said, "Yes, we want you to apply." These are done because there is no, we have no revenue to pay them for the preparation of the grant. So, in most cases, the engineering firm will say, "We do the grant for nothing." And you wind up, when it's over with, and you award them based on their expertise, the design contract. Now, Mr. Buzzio seems to have a burr under his saddle that we're getting ripped off. He couldn't be further from right because there is a limit as to what, within the grant process, that the engineering firm can charge for their services. And we have had several, over the years, I've been here 22 years. We have had several disasters. We had a well driller, quite an expensive project, who couldn't complete a well. And that got into liquidating damages and a whole bunch of other things. The firm of, of, McDavid and Associates is one of the best firms in the state when it comes to getting grants. They can get grants when nobody else has got grants. They have been very good for Beaufort County. We are way ahead of the game with McDavid and Associates and the things that they have done for us. McDavid managed, manages to bring their projects in under budget, which is a really big deal when you look at their record. The well that couldn't be completed, they managed to pull that off without it costing the county additional money. And in the case that we were talking about for the, with the contractor that could not perform with the bore under the river, McDavid and Associates told us, "We're gonna bring this off so it's not gonna cost you any more money." They managed the project through liquidating damages to get the work done and to get it done within budget. This is very valuable when you're dealing with an engineering or an architectural firm. It's very important, that reputation is important. So, for some of the Commissioners up here who seem to think the county's getting ripped off, it's mostly their ignorance that's getting ripped off.
Commissioner Brennan, will you leave ignorance out of your next?
Certainly will.
Commissioner Brennan is much more professional.
Christina, in your professional opinion, how's that? If we had to bring another group in to do this, how much extra money would it cost? Because they would have to research the whole water system? And how much more money would it cost to, to have that done and what we're paying now?
For us, it would be time. Because this grant has been awarded. The Golden Leaf Foundation has awarded this project. McDavid Associates has accompanied other county staff to the pre-award meetings with the Golden Leaf Foundation. So, they are aware of the documentation requirements that are required throughout the grant process, the reimbursement process. So, it would take another firm to come in. They would have to, to learn our system, to learn the design, and then to go in. So, the, and again, as previous, I believe Commissioner Richardson said, there's a certain percentage-
We had to do that, we, we wouldn't have time to get the grant money.
It, it would delay the project.
Okay, thank you.
And it would delay the installation of the emergency generators.
Mr. Langley.
Yeah, I just wanna make a statement, and I, and I say this with all sincerity. When the county hires people to lead different departments, and especially when I feel like it has been a, a good hire, I trust them to make the best decision for the county. And I can honestly say beyond a shadow of a doubt that Mrs. Smith has done an excellent job in looking out for the county's interests. And I know for a fact that she would not willingly allow anybody to take advantage of Beaufort County.
Mr. Evans, do you?
I'm on the Water Committee, so I know what Christina does. I calculated for down.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. A motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Evans. I think we've already had some discussion, but if there's anybody who would like to say one more thing, I'll let you do it. All right, let's vote.
I'll say one more thing.
Okay.
First of all, I wanna make it very clear, Christine, I wasn't criticizing you. I've had this discussion on numerous occasions with you.
Yes, sir.
And it's Commissioner Booth. And it's customary for companies out there to try and get themselves ingratiated. And they do that by, and most companies, when they do a grant and when they come in, they don't charge. That's common practice in the industry. In any industry you're involved in, putting the grant together, they don't charge for it. Because they wanna get the contract awarded.
Okay. That's it? Are those in favor, raise your right hand? Vote was unanimous, okay? You wanna move right into the next agenda item?
Yes, and thank you, Commissioner Langley, for your comment. The next item is very similar in nature. It is the approval of technical services agreement, again, to McDavid Associates. And this is, you'll see numerous pages in your agenda packet. And that is because each of the individual water districts' grants were awarded to District 1, District 4, District 5, District 6, as well as District 7. Just as a summary, the project's total $4.9 million. And of that, 3.1 is grant, are grant funds and 1.7 are 0% 20-year loan funds. So, again, the, these are, again, technical services agreements. I went back and confirmed that they are consistent with prior technical services contracts with McDavid Associates in order to manage division of water infrastructure, state drinking water reserve programs. That's an important distinction to note because the different grant funding programs have different reporting requirements. So, it takes a different amount of time to do the process of paperwork for different types of grants. And, again, that's consistent with everything with the drinking water reserve program.
Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Now, is there any comments or questions? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Same comments.
Same duly noted.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay, let's vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Katie. We're down to the bid approval for HMGP 2015 rescopement. Lisa.
Good evening. Commissioners, in your package, you have a bid tab on... We held a pre-bid meeting on March the 9th for three properties that are eligible for elevation through the HMGP rescopement funds. Rescopement was an add-on to 2015 HMGP, it was actually extra money. Four contractors submitted bids for each of the three houses. You have in your packet the bid tab. 101 Beachtree Court, Washington, and 716 Hubstrek Road, Bellhaven, were awarded to the lowest bidder of B&amp;B Construction. And 130 Spruce Street, Washington, was awarded to the lowest bidder, Paul Wood Construction. Commissioner Brennan oversaw that bid opening. And I'm asking for a motion to accept the bid tab so we can move forward.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just to correct, I think you said Paul Wood, you meant-
Yeah, Paul Woolard. Paul Woolard.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Item number six, request for salary change. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. The request for this salary change is, is for the Emergency Medical Services Operations Chief from 18 to 25. Also, a request for a change of the FLSA status of the position from non-exempt, which is eligible to overtime, to exempt not eligible overtime, and request for a salary change from $45,394 to $62,000. I'm not gonna read the rest of that information that, that you have in your packet, that you've been able to look at. But I would like to provide some further information on this request. First of all, the individual filling this position is highly skilled in what he does. He does an extremely good job in that he supervises the most amount of employees in our entire division. 41 full-time employees plus part-time staff. When we look at the position, this position came in, in a new EMS system. And as the system has started growing, has been able to grow with that system and doing a very good job. We have other employees in the county that could fit under these same kind of categories, highly skilled in their job and are doing a good job where they are. The third thing is the kicker for me being in front of you today, and that is this request is actually to save some money for the county. And if you look at the overtime that is considered in this position of what's been paid already this year, it's an extreme amount of overtime. I'd like to explain that piece because when you first look at that number, it kinda gets your attention. So, EMS is different than any other shift position that we will have in the county. It's on a shift, 24 hours on, three days off. The reason for that is because of the overtime pay. You either do it that way to pay the, the least amount of overtime or you have to have exactly double the amount of manpower to work on a 12-hour shifts. So, the way we're set up for 24 hours versus 72 hours off, it automatically, in our base level pay, puts somebody making about $6,000 to $7,000 overtime just part of their normal salary, and that's coming to work every day. Each time you move up in position, like to the supervisor position, that goes up to about $9,000 of normal overtime pay that's just calculated into your salary. This position is an 8-to-5 job. And so, it supervises all of the EMS, but the current salary that, that is an exempt position, the current salary is based on that 8-to-5. The need for this overtime has to do with, we have four supervisors that supervise our EMS system, the actual on-duty time. Whenever one of those is out, I request that another one of those supervisors or this EMS chief take that position because they're the first level to any challenges we may have across our system. So, in that, it really puts it down to only about four or five people that are filling this one spot. And so, when you take the position in question, which normally works 8-to-5, ends up having to fill in for one of those supervisors, going to a 24-hour shift, it's 24 hours of overtime at one time. And so, when we look at that, you see the, the overtime up to date or up until the time this was submitted was at $21,124. If we averaged out the overtime that's going in place, this position would make over $70,000 in a year. And so, in conjunction with the MAP study of where this position would be, what's happening in filling the position with a proper individual for this supervision position of the EMS staff, that's where this overtime is coming from. It's recommendation of myself, of the individual, along with county manager and human resources director, that we try to make this adjustment, stopping the overtime, making it a exempt position when we look at it and giving a salary that would be comparable, still not completely matching where the MAP study would be for the position, but putting it at a salary that would be comparable for the things that are at hand.
Carney, does this pass the Fair Labor Standards Act?
Completely.
Got a motion on the floor. Second, got a motion by Buzzio and a second by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion?
Yeah. Who's gonna work those hours that he's working now?
He's still gonna work, he's still gonna work some of those hours. Now, is he gonna work every one of those hours? What, what has happened in our system this year is we've had employees that have had to be out long extended periods of time. That's not a guarantee to happen every year, but there is that need. I, I know myself, I'm exempt, I know the job's gotta get done. Same thing with, with my other operations chief, and it is made very clearly to this operations chief, the job still has to get done. And so, there's gonna be a bulk of this overtime or this time slot that's still going to be done by the person that's in the position.
What you see, based on what I know about classifying employees, using the overtime as the reason for increasing somebody's wages is not justifiable when you start classifying employees. The county would be better off to keep him in an overtime position because you may, you may wind up finding out that you can manage things in other ways. And I've looked at your overtime for the, for the, your whole year of 2017, and it's terrible.
It is way out of whack. You're right, sir.
Yeah. I mean, I've got serious questions about management of overtime in that department. And I'm gonna vote against this because this is really a bad idea to say, "Oh gee, he's gonna make that anyway in overtime, so we'll just go ahead and up him to the salary and pay it." That's not how employee classification works.
I agree.
Long shot.
I agree with you. And I will say, in the overtime situation, it is still a new system. And we gained additional district last year. We actually took that district in budget-wise, less than what we have set ourselves, it normally sits to take up a station, which is half a million dollars. We did it a little bit less than that. And there was concern, but we knew we're a growing system. It's new. And, and really, when we look at that in the overtime, we're still learning where that falls. But I understand your request.
I think, I think we should put this off until your department comes up with a report on how to reduce overtime. Because your department has too much overtime. And what that tells me is that somebody's not spending a lot of time thinking about how to reduce overtime.
So, so that you brought that up, if I may respond, Commissioner. With that, plan went into place about five weeks ago of ensuring that our part-time personnel fill every position before any full-time personnel can, with the exception of this QRV. It is the supervisor, the on-duty person supervising the EMS system going on at any time. Usually, we're, we're A-OK, but at any time, something can happen which mandates that person have that experience level to be able to answer questions and do things to the on-call staff.
Well, I just can't support it for the reasons I gave.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote was five to one. Thank you, Carney. All right, item number seven is the vehicle purchase request. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we start this, we're, you know, some of these motions are made really quick from the hip. I think we need to have a period of discussion before we start making motions.
Okay.
Commissioners, we're doing well. Start with, I have a-
Start with, I have a 2005 Chevy Impala with over 125,000 miles. It has a lower motor issue for heat, a compressor issue for air conditioning, power steering pump issues, paint peeling from the top, water leak. An old car. And also have engine problems that the light keeps coming on, and we still haven't figured out what that is. So my plan was to put this into next year's budget, and I did put it into next year's budget. I've already made that recommendation to the county. But then, we received some extra money from the state for a performance fund, which came to the environmental health section. And so I went through and looked at the budget, and saw money that we have that's already been approved. And so if I put that $8,000 from that and combine it with mosquito supply money, then I have enough money I can go ahead and get that this year and then take it out of next year's budget. So that's why I'm here to ask for.
So you're not asking for an increase in the budget?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess one of the problems that I have with this is, this is for environmental health, right?
Yes, sir.
Don't they put augers and carry equipment and go out through the weeds and then doing stuff?
It depends. And a couple of people do that, but that's not for this vehicle. This vehicle is one that does restaurant inspections and is run by the supervisor. This particular vehicle.
That was, I had a question about it being a Chevy Malibu. I'm wondering why not a pickup truck or something like that that's more serviceable?
Because this is not one that's going out in the field for the wastewater septic site systems and evaluation.
Entertained a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the purchase, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Martin. The grant application for the Beaufort County Industrial Park Sewer Pump Station.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Bring a grant opportunity to you tonight. On February 7th of this year, Governor Cooper announced a $12 million Rural Ready Sites Program. The Rural Ready Sites Development Programs allow rural areas to apply for funds to build or improve public infrastructure for sites that have strong potential to attract employers, create jobs, and support the local, regional, and state economy. Other qualifications, they do have to be in Tier One or Tier Two counties. The site needs to be publicly owned or controlled, has to be a minimum of 50 contiguous acres, and funds can only be used to construct public infrastructure. We have been trying to have the Beaufort County Industrial Park at Chalkawinnity certified by the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina for quite a while, since 2013, actually. The issue there is that the certification requires that we have 300,000 gallons of sewer per day, based on average flow. Right now, we only have 80,000 gallons. To increase that capacity to the 300,000 gallons required to certify the site is at a cost of about $911,000. That project would be eligible for the grant funds, however, there is a 25% match needed, which is about $227,750. Also, since we've been trying to have this site certified since 2013, the Phase One Environmental Study and the... Sorry, I lost my place. The environmental study and the wetlands determination have actually expired. They're over four years old, so that would be another $15,000 on that. So this is an opportunity I bring to you. It is one of those opportunities that the state has put in place, and it's really whether you wish to take advantage of this at this time.
Questions for Martin?
I guess the concern I have is that, you know, we're talking about $242,000 from the general fund, and with no real prospects on that site, I'm not in favor of making the application.
Right. I understand.
Is there...
Go ahead.
Is there any possibility of negotiating, of the standards changing, or...
I've spent the last three and a half years trying to do that, and they have been adamant that they want the 300,000 gallons.
No, but within the grant, is there any flexibility within the grant?
This is actually funds from what's called the Industrial Development Funds. Basically, they took, I think, well, $10 million of that fund and $2 million from the General Assembly put into this, and the 25% is a regulation of the larger fund.
So you can't get around that?
No.
You know?
Not as currently written.
And Martin, I would be in favor if you tell us that we need to move forward. If the environmental determination, that assessment, has expired, is that something that's pretty vital for us to go ahead and redo that?
Well, without the 300,000 gallons...
You don't need it?
We can't certify it, and probably if a client did come in, we'd probably need to do that anyway additionally.
So there's no advantage to doing that with that the whole time?
The thing with it is, we have all the data as though it was certified. We just don't have this one piece, and I regularly send all that data out to clients. It's just a matter of, you know, it's not in the state system as being certified.
The big expense in this is the storage that's necessary in order to be able to cycle the pumps so you can get the 300,000 down the... It's a four-inch line, I believe. So you're going to have a set of pumps that's going to be coming on about every 30 minutes and then shutting down in order to use... You're going to have to use the line 24 hours a day.
Yes.
That's what it comes down to in order to make it work.
Yeah, now, that was a saving because if, to what you're saying, if we had to increase the size of the line, then that...
Yeah, that would...
...project, it's about 1.5 million.
When I saw the storage, I knew what it was because that's one of the ways to get a lot more capacity out of a pump station.
Yeah.
I feel like the chairman, and that is the fact that we have no prospects on this site, and that we've been sitting there for some time. Of course, I guess the other argument is if you build it, they will come.
Right.
Argument two, if you had the capacity, you might be able to attract another industry that maybe would not come. How long does this fund last? Is this a one-time shot, or is there a life to it?
This is a one-time shot for this program, but the Industrial Development Fund is actually monies that are recovered from the JDIG program.
So...
And so that actually will go on, so we could, in the future, apply.
If you were to get, say that somebody didn't want to go on the site, then we could go back to Commerce with their other funds and apply for a grant that might let us satisfy whoever, because...
You know, at 25, if you're just talking, you're not talking about processed water here. So the capacity, 80,000 gallons, you have 25 gallons a day per employee is what you're required to have. That takes care of 3,200 employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you were bucking this thing up to the volumes that Martin's talking about, you're talking about an industry that uses processed water, processed wastewater or water. And if they're using processed water, that comes to Washington for treatment, then you're going to be over negotiating with the city of Washington to take that wastewater and to treat it and do what they need to do. But I'd like the plan that you presented from the standpoint that there is a backup if somebody were to want to come here, we can service them.
Right, yes. And that... The reason this program exists is that this program wasn't being utilized, and so in some ways, this was a marketing attempt by the governor to push the money out.
Well, I want to say this to you. I know people take grant money as fast as they can get it because some of these guys like McDavid are real good at getting grant money. But, you know, if you see changes in this program where, you know, it was like 10%, come back to us.
Okay, I will do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Commissioner Brand?
Martin, is this grant, is it time-sensitive right now?
Yeah, the... Well, as I say, this part of it, of this program that the governor has created, yes. It's actually, the application is due at the end of this week. The Industrial Development Fund, however, goes on. So in that sense, no, although they'll obviously spend a lot of the balance of their funds in this, and that is the idea, that they basically had 10 million sat there, not in infrastructure. So the governor said, hey, let's get the money out into the sites to hopefully create some jobs.
I like the plan. I'm like Commissioner Richardson, I like the plan, and I just don't like folks taking that much money out of the fund box right now.
And, you know, February to now, it was very quick, again, very quick process of trying to get something done.
Good information, but I don't think we can use it around here.
We highly encourage you to come back if you have a prospect. I think this group would be more than happy to try to move forward to make that part work.
And I hope I have to do that next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, we're down to item number nine, the resolution ordinance for notifying the designated parties with prisoners when prisoners are admitted to the hospital. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, at the last meeting, we voted to move forward with an ordinance that would require the sheriff to notify whomever a inmate might put on his forms when he's checked into the jail, if that inmate is admitted to the hospital. We voted to do that. The vote was four to three. There seems to be that we're not moving out very fast, and what I would like to do is to request that we move forward with the preparation of the ordinance and the advertising of the ordinance so that we can get the ordinance passed and into effect. There's... That's what I want to move forward with, and I want to know why we're not moving forward with it.
Brian?
The short answer is, the county attorney has some concerns that it's not a legal ordinance. And I'll let the county attorney speak to that.
Well, let the county attorney speak to it because I have some concerns, too, that it is a very legal ordinance.
I sent a memo to you all, at least I hope each one of you got it, on this subject. And I said in that memo that I'm looking at this, and I'm not convinced of our way clear to pass of law by local ordinance. In the General Statutes, Article Three, Duties of the Sheriff, and Article Four, the County Prisoners of Chapter 162, and Article Ten, Law Enforcement and Confinement Facilities of Chapter 153A, seem to state the state law in this area and gives a penalty for noncompliance. See, for example, 153A-223, which is the supervision of local confinement facilities, that a violation of that is a Class One misdemeanor. 153A-225, Medical Care of Prisoners, same penalty. 152A-251, is the duty of custodial personnel when prisoners are unconscious or semi-conscious. There's no penalty given, but prisoner's liable for reasonable cost of care unless indignant. The question that is presented, considering all of that, is there sufficient state law to cover this? I would say to you that it sounds like we've got all of these, these are whole chapters of the General Statutes. If we pass a local ordinance, how are we going to enforce that ordinance? In addition to that, GS 162-57 requires the person having charge of prisoners, the sheriff or his agent designee, is required to keep a record showing the name, age, date of sentence, length of sentence, crime for which convicted, home address, and next of kin, and the conduct of each prisoner received. That's been on the books since 1927. It was revised in 1983. Seems to me that maintaining the next of kin implies it to be for purposes of notifying such next of kin in the event of an emergency, which I think certainly would be unconscious or semi-conscious prisoner. My recommendation, having considered all of those statutes, and there's whole chapters there on that, I think if we're determined to do something in this area, we should consider sending a resolution to our local legislative delegation to amend GS 162-57 and oral 157A-225 and 225.1. I don't think a local ordinance is the right way to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The... I read, I appreciate getting that email. You sent it out with the references. And I looked up all those references, read them, and all of that, all these things do is state what the minimum requirements for the sheriff is, or the jailer. It does not say the maximum requirements or give methodology, but it says, you've got to do this at a minimum. That's the minimum. But let's go back up. You were citing General Statute 153A. Let's go back up to the beginning of General Statute 153A because the legislature said some really important things at the beginning of that statute. 153A-4, and this is in your book, and I'm going to emphasize at the proper place, it is the policy of the General Assembly that the counties of this state should have adequate authority to exercise the powers, rights, duties, functions, privileges, and immunities conferred upon them by the law. To this and end the provisions of this chapter and the local act shall be broadly construed, and grants of power shall be construed to include any powers that are reasonably expedient to the exercise of the power. What that says is, guys, you need to pass the ordinances that you need to pass in order to make sure that the rest of our law is enforced. We're giving you broad authority to do this. And then you go on to 153A-12, the exercise of corporate power. Now, keep in mind, corporate power in this case means the power of the county as a corporate power, not a corporation, so don't get that confused. Except as otherwise directed by law, each power, right, duty, function, privilege, and immunity of the corporation shall be exercised by the Board of Commissioners. A power, right, duty, function, privilege, or immunity shall be carried into execution as provided by the laws of the state. A power, right, duty, function, privilege, or immunity that is conferred or imposed by law without direction or restriction, I didn't hear any restrictions in that stuff you read to us, as to how it is to be exercised or performed, shall be carried into execution as provided by ordinance or resolution of the Board of Commissioners. So what I want to know is, do you have an Attorney General's opinion as to whether or not we can pass this particular ordinance?
No.
Then we need that. We don't need to go to the legislature. That's a delaying tactic that will take forever. We need to go to the Attorney General and say, this is the ordinance that this board wants to pass. What's your opinion?
I'm not delaying anything. I'm just telling you, in my opinion, what needs to be done. I would point out to you that both of those statutes, the first one you read is 1973 statute. These were passed after that. The 153A-12 is 1868.
Yeah.
So there you have all chapters of the General Statutes that are fleshed out. What do you do with jails?
Well, the Constitution was passed in the 1700s, but it's not out of date. And the laws that you read, I read them, they don't say, except as provided in 153A-4, or put any restrictions on the two statutes that I just read here. So we need an opinion from the Attorney General if you're going to drag your feet on this issue.
Commissioner Buzzio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, David, I want to thank you for your clarification on your email that you sent out and the statements you made there. And being that you're our advisor and legal counsel, I would have to agree that if we want to do something, we should go to legislation. Now, and I looked at 153, which is organization and definitions in statutory construction, and there's many articles in that. And there's actually 473 sections in that legislation from the, or that act from the state. And I found another section in here, which is an article... And I found another section in here, which is in Article Five, and a reference to these two are in Article One. And Article Five, it talks about organization, reorganization of county government. And I'd have to leave it up to you if it applies. It seems to apply to me, but it may not to this discussion. And it talks about the Board of Commissioners, to organize county or government. The Board of Commissioners may create, change, abolish, consolidate, may impose ex officio the duties of more than one officer on a single officer, and it goes into a lot of detail. But then it has a sentence in there and says, subject to the following limitations. And when I read this, there's six, seven of them, I found two of them that are extremely interesting that may apply to this discussion. And it says that everything else there you can do, with the exception of the following, the board may not combine offices or confer certain duties on the same officer when this action is specifically forbidden by law. And that seems to be what your email says, certain things are forbidden. And this, this seems to back up what you're saying. Then number three, the board may not discontinue or assign elsewhere a function of duly, or duly assigned by law to a particular office, which would be the sheriff's office, which we don't have any authority over. So, and just briefly looking at this, this was another section, I think, maybe applied to this discussion, that we don't, we may not have that authority, like you said. And we may have to, we want to do it and go to the legislation and have not only 153 changed, but also some of these other sections in 152 may have to be changed in order to give the county this authority, which now wouldn't only be for us, but be for the whole state. So, that's, so I would have to agree with you that we may not have the authority to do this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I am making a request of the county attorney that he go to the Attorney General with the presentation of the ordinance that we want to pass and ask if we can pass this or not. Let's get an opinion. If you've ever been on the floor of the legislature, I happen to have, the legislation flows back and forth between the House and the Senate. You can walk in up there with something that says, the sky is blue, and by the time they pass it back and forth between them with the changes, and it goes through the committees, you don't know what you're going to get. Sending something to the legislature like this is a delaying tactic unless we get opinions from the Attorney General that you're going to need a new law in order to do this. And you, makes you wonder why, the two that I read, it's number four, talks about broad construction. Why would the writers of 153, and these guys say there's 400 and something articles within that, why would they go to the trouble to make this statement at the beginning of this, of the interpretation of broad authority? There is nothing in what Attorney Francisco has presented to us that limits the authority of the two things that I just read, or limits the ability or the authority of the county commissioners to run the corporate, corporate governmental affairs of Beaufort County. It's not there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brand.
I agree, I agree that going to legislators would, would be a delay. I'm not so sure it's a tactic, but it would be a delay. Whatever, I'm in favor of getting this ordinance in place, but what we need to do is make sure that we're within legal standing. And call UNC School of Government, or as Commissioner Richardson said, make a call to the Attorney General and just get an opinion from him. I think that would be the way to handle it. And, and let's don't make the wrong decision right now.
I just want to make a comment. You know, it's, it's sad that we're having this conversation when all we hear all the time is how, how great a Christian we are. And, and if we were who we say we are, we would have compassion for people, and we would not be having this type of conversation. Christ was all about love, and when you say that you are a Christian, that's what you're saying, you're, you're like Christ. And Christ always looked out for the least of them, anybody who cannot take care of themselves. He was always there for them, and we, as a society, we've got to get to the point where people are important. There are no throwaway people, and we should have compassion for everybody. And that's what I have to say.
I want to say one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Everybody's talking, unsurprisingly. First of all, when we move forward for an ordinance, has nothing to do about passion, has nothing to do, it has to do about the legality of it. Otherwise, we don't want to open ourselves up for a lawsuit. Now, if we're going to go forward with getting an opinion from the Attorney General, which I have no problem with, we can do that. But we also better make sure that we look at the HIPAA considerations, which is the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of 1996, because there's a lot of information here that talks about what information can be transferred and who can transfer. So, if we're going to go down this road, we better make sure we're not only meeting the state requirements, but we're meeting the requirements of HIPAA, which is enforced by the federal government and also by the state. So, if we're going to go down this road, Mr. Chairman, I suggest we look at both of them so that we're on sound legal ground and we don't open ourselves up for a lawsuit by the government.
Mr. Abbott?
I think Ron's kind of going in the right direction there. I mean, if you go in and you get a power of attorney, then you're going to go back and get a, basically a HIPAA power of attorney, where relatives can go in and have that permission. You just can't go up and say, that's my mother, that's my son. It's a very complicated process, and I don't know how public county can all of a sudden say, we're going to do an ordinance and violate all things that go into the jail, all the things go into the hospital. How are we going to figure out a way to regulate that? So, it's, it's extremely complicated, and if we want to look, go in this direction, I mean, we, we need to take our time and see if we can do it the right way, because it's set up to be extremely, unfortunately, very complex. I mean, that's all you got to do now is go in and you want to take care of your family, well, you're going to spend about $3,000 with an attorney to have power of attorney and all these other documents recorded so that you can take care of them. So, it's a very complicated process now, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't think this is a complicated process, because basically, all you do is pick up the telephone and tell a family member such and such is in bad shape and going to the hospital. That is not a complicated thing. And y'all can talk all you want to, you cannot convince me otherwise. This is just plain and simple. All this other stuff is strictly for luck. All you got to do is let people know they have a family member who's in distress. We have got to stop complicating everything.
And I, and I agree with you 100%, but can you get somebody to do that? Can you guarantee somebody's going to pick up the phone and call?
We can guarantee that they're supposed to. Right now, the sheriff's telling us, we didn't have to, and he can go and do whatever he wants to. But, Mr. Chairman, let me put a couple, one more thing out here. We have more resources than what we're talking, what we've already talked about. Number one, we've got the Association of County Commissioners. There are plenty of counties over the years that have had battles with sheriffs, you know. So, let's go to, let's go to the Association of County Commissioners and let them do a screen for us and see what's going on in other counties about controlling and regulating sheriffs. We will learn something from that. And then, as has been alluded to, here, we've got the Institute of Government at Chapel Hill, and any of us can call those guys and talk to them. So, we, we need, if you want, if you're, if you're going to delay this, I agree with what, what Commissioner Langley has said wholeheartedly. But if you're going to, if you're going to want to delay this thing and slow it down as much as you can, then let's use these resources. And to that end, I think that what the, what the county attorney should do is draft the ordinance the way he thinks it should look, send it to us, and let us look at it during, you know, so we can all say, this is about what we're talking about, and then he's ready to go. Because I want to see what he's sending the Attorney General myself, because there is a very old attorney here who's very smart and very wise, told me one time, he says it depends on how you ask the question to the Attorney General as to the answer you get. That guy was Billy Mayo, our former county attorney. So, I want to see what's sent to the Attorney General.
The, the concern I've got, David, is that if we proceed and we try to implement this, I, I would say that the North Carolina Sheriff's Association probably would challenge the overstep that we're trying to do. And I would, I would ask that in the circle, that somehow or other, whatever we do, we share it with the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. To me, there's accepted practices that, you know, in the certification process, and, you know, I think we're, I think we're all up here trying to second guess what the actual policy is and whether the policy wasn't here to. Up to this point, nobody has showed me that anything was done wrong in this process.
We're playing with half the deck.
So, I think you've got enough instructions on that, David.
Well, yes, I'm, I'm hearing a lot, but I'm sure, I'm not sure exactly what we want to say in, in an ordinance that's not already said in the statutes.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is that the county is involved in enough lawsuits that before we take action and we pass this, we want to make sure that we're on pretty, pretty sound footing. Otherwise, we don't need to be forward on this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly don't want to speak for county attorney, but if the board, and as you well know, the board speaks and acts as one. So, if the board would make a motion to direct the county attorney and myself on what you want us to do, if that passes, that gives us clear direction on what you want us to do, instead of everybody kind of saying a little something. Because you want it to be clear. You want us to be clear. So, if the board will formulate that and pass that down, then we'll certainly be glad to act on it. But, but our goal is to ensure that the board has provided the best information they can get so that you don't get in trouble going down the line.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Let me try this, see if the board agrees with it. That we direct the county attorney and the county manager to prepare a written request that's forwarded to the Attorney General of the state of North Carolina and the Sheriff's Association and our county association, requesting their input or whether it's legal for the county commissioners to write a new ordinance that requires the following from the sheriff's office.
The only thing I would say to that is that that is to be approved by the, each member of the board before it's sent, or disapproved, whichever, however it works out. I want to see it before it's sent.
They just send us an email.
They send us a CC of what they send out. I have no problem with them writing it themselves.
Okay.
We're going to have seven people up here making comments. We'll never get it out. We don't want to delay it any longer.
Do let me ask this question. I understand there are a lot of folks that you can ask this question to, but I think ultimately, the Attorney General is the one that we would rely upon for a legal opinion.
Yeah.
The, I mean, they are the, the chief law enforcement officer for the state of North Carolina.
Yeah, but, but the key word in that is opinion, so, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, we can have the conversation with the association, we can have the conversation with the school of government, but an opinion from the Attorney General, I mean, maybe you write it and you send it to the Attorney General and ask for their opinion.
All right. And I'll amend my motion just to do that.
No, 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 no. Oh, no, 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 oh, no, no. You need everybody you can have. As far as I'm concerned, the Institute of Government, the Sheriff's Association, the Association of County Commissioners, we want their opinion in this, too. It goes to them, too, just like your original motion. What's wrong with the opinion? The key word is opinion.
But I think he's saying, Commissioner Richardson, that only the legal opinion from the Attorney General is the one that applies, that we would have to follow. The others, we could bring them in with discussions, have, let them have discussion.
I understand, but the key word here is opinion, opinion, opinion. You don't have to follow the opinion. You don't have to do what they say.
They all just have an opinion.
You, you look at the opinion and see how strong it is. I've seen some Attorney General opinions that were weak as water. They didn't mean anything.
I'll tell you right now, if my county attorney gives me a legal opinion, I'm going to follow it. If the Attorney General gives me a legal opinion, I'm going to follow it.
I've been here 22 years, and the, and the county attorneys that were here before will tell you, I didn't follow their opinions, I challenged their opinions, and you should be challenging their opinions, too, because they got a political position that they pushing to.
And your whole discussion here is political anyway. Let's not go down that road.
Okay. We don't have a motion yet that anybody's going to support. Is that what, what we're saying?
I can support what Commissioner Busio said, provided we, we include, I think he backed up a little bit on it, but provided we include opinions from the, his original motion, let's put it that way.
Opinions or discussion? We have discussions with these other entities.
Yeah, we have, yeah, well, I don't, yeah.
Should I go with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
So, let me try this. That we direct the county manager and the county attorney to prepare correspondence which they'll forward to the Attorney General of the state of North Carolina for a legal opinion. And then, also that they hold conversations with the Sheriff's Association, our association, the school of government. Anybody else?
Well, yeah. I mean, you still got the healthcare provider. You've taken a person into the hospital, and a deputy has to go with them. I, I think the school of government can, can address that. They're, they have, they have subject matter experts that, I guess, each of those.
Because I went on the HIPAA website, and they, they have an answer for every question you could possibly think of.
You said have discussions, I think obtain opinions. He can have a discussion with them. I want to see what their opinion is. All of us are needing.
Not a legal opinion.
Opinions, just opinions, yeah.
I can go on with that.
You want a second?
I'll second.
All right. Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Let's vote. All those that understood the motion and in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
As long as they understand it.
Qualify. David, if you have any questions, call me.
I'll call you.
Call me, I'll give you an opinion.
Stay away from the commissioners, just call the chairman.
Okay. Lost my place here on the agenda. We're down to item number 10, reexamine the $150,000 allocated to the sheriff's office for medical costs. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I'll be real quick with this. All I want to do is to, we took that $150,000 out of the fund balance, all I want to do is take it out of the sheriff's budget. Look in the sheriff's budget and direct the manager to look in the sheriff's budget, and if there's $150,000 of lapsed salaries or wherever he can find it, take it out of the sheriff's budget and don't take it out of the general, out of the fund balance.
Brian?
The discussion on that would be the finance officers look at that, and there is not, there is not funding there.
In other words, he's spending all of his money every dime he can get his hands on.
Well, there, there was a little bit of a surplus for lapsed salaries in the communications budget. However, overtime in the sheriff's office is running over, so we anticipate using that leftover money in communications to cover that, so we won't have to ask for any more money.
All right. I'll tell you, I'm done with that one.
Okay. Item number 11 is the fiscal year 1718 audit contract. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, it is that time of year again when we choose an audit firm to complete our annual audit. I did reach out to Jeff Best CPA, and he said that he would do the audit for the same price as last year, which was $55,000. The Finance Committee is in support of contracting with Jeff Best to complete the audits, and my recommendation to you tonight is toward the contract for the fiscal year 1718 audit to Jeff Best CPA and authorize the chairman to sign the contract. And there is a copy of that contract attached if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion to, got a motion by Commissioner Busio and a second by Commissioner Brand. Now forward to discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not going to vote for this. Tell me, how many years has Jeff Best as an individual worked on the county audit?
Um, one.
One?
As an, as an individual firm?
No, no, as an individual person.
Um, well.
Four that I know of.
Three.
Three. Okay. I'm not going to vote for this. We should have gone out for bids for this. The price of $55,000 is too high, and we don't, we don't need to continue with the same audit firm, the practices that you roll these things over every so often, and I think we've missed the boat on this, so I'm not going to vote for it. I think we need to go out for bids.
Any other discussion?
Just one. How long is this contract for?
It's one year.
One year, okay. I can vote for that.
Okay. All right. So, we're really, this will make the fourth year that he's been involved in the audit. So we're really, this will make the fourth year that he's been involved in the audit.
Yes. It, it will be the second year that Jeff Best CPA has completed the off, the audit. Previous to that, Jeff was a partner with CRI. But remember, last year there was a change, and he went on his own. So, but as far as Jeff himself being involved in the county's audit, it will be the fourth year.
Okay. Got a motion.
Got a motion and a second?
Motion and a second. No more discussion. All those in favor of the contract, raise your right hand. Those opposed, five to one. Okay. Item number 12, the radio communications project lease agreements. Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. The task, you have two sub-lease agreements and two lease agreements with the state of North Carolina for use of the Viper infrastructure. This is actually the Viper towers. It supports the county's radio communications project. Once we have those, these have gone through the council of state and have been sent to us. County attorney has reviewed them. Once they've been approved by the county, we can send them back and we can start installing our associated radio equipment on those Viper tower sites. So we would recommend.
First recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the lease, the leases for?
Time to move.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Brennan and a second by Commissioner Evans. Discussion. If not, all those in favor of the four different leases, raise your right hand. Those opposed, five to one. Item number 13 is the county water districts reorganization projects. Brian.
Yes, sir. Let me get there. So as you recall, at the 1819 planning retreat, we discussed with you the possibility of consolidating those sub-water agreements into a management entity operating agreement. That was done under the, under the consultation with Bob Jessup, who is a bond counsel attorney who specializes in, there was, there were some concerns about the bond covenants and those things relating to it. He's looked at it, and he says that they've done it with other entities before. He would essentially consolidate those under a management entity. The county would act as the management entity to run that entire system. The, the districts would stay as the districts because you can't dissolve the districts until the debt is paid off. However, we wouldn't have to track individual, how much this goes to this one, this district. It would be operated as a total system, as, as I believe it was intended originally to be. In order to do that, we would need a rate study to be done so that we know what the rates need to be to support the entire system, because we have multiple rates across the system right now. That would also include knowing what our capital improvement projects were throughout the year so that we, we fund those correctly. So what you have in this proposal is you've got a rate study proposal from WR Martin to do that in the amount of $36,400. That's a not-to-exceed figure, and it, and it could be less based on the number of meetings they have to have with us. You've got a proposal from Sanford-Hosauer to draft the final management agreement. That's done at a not-to-exceed cost of $4,500. And then what we need, if you move forward with that, if that's an agreeable, what we need to understand from the board is, what kind of timeframe do you want to put in place to, to roll these, to bring these rates together? You'll see, item, item number three there shows that the spread from the high to the low on our water districts, across our water districts, is $11.24. District five is the highest at $38.64, and district two is the lowest at $27.40. So you, we would not recommend to you that you immediately just change everybody. We would recommend that you roll that in over a period of time. And what we would, if, if you want to move forward with this, then we need to understand what kind of timeframe. Is that a year's timeframe or is that two years' timeframe? I don't think you want to get any fur, any too, too far, too, much further than two years out on rolling that together. But it keeps that, it would, it would, it would minimize that immediate sticker shock from the highest to the lowest and all of a sudden, like, you know, one going.
When you say roll it in, would you mean combining like three water districts to begin with, or do, do it all at one time?
What I'm talking about is all seven districts, and then do, well, we would look at the rate study, we've got to do a rate study to look at all seven districts and tell us what is the appropriate rate to charge across all seven of those districts, a uniform rate across all seven districts, that would pay for the operation of those districts and provide for the capital needed to continue to, you know, provide for the system. Once we know what that number is, we need to know how long do you want to take to, to get to that rate? Because you got some that are gonna go up, you got some that are gonna go down to get to that, to that final rate.
But you're gonna have negative cash flow while you're rolling it up.
You're gonna have some.
Yeah.
You've got a fund balance that's built up in there, and, and they'll look at that when they're doing the rate study.
But Joe is gonna be paying what part of Sam's water bill?
That's right.
I mean, you know, if you're in one of those $29 or $39 districts that's $11 higher, you're gonna be for this because the river/road crowd out here that have the oldest district that's paid down and has probably the lowest rates. Yeah. Your, your rates are going up.
I know.
You know? So how much money is, if we do this, how much money is this gonna save us?
How much money is it gonna save?
Yeah, how much money is it gonna save us?
Yeah, I don't know, I can put an actual dollar amount on that. Because what we'll be able to do is consolidate our, our resources. I mean, the way we do things now is, we have, we have, we break stuff out, and, and there's just a, there, there's a lot of mess that's involved, and it's not very clean. I mean, if, you know, if the board doesn't want to move forward with this, we're happy to do this. This was something that was brought for the board's consideration, because that's what we had heard the board say at the planning retreat, was you wanted this to be a uniform rate across all seven districts. We're happy to back up and say, leave it the way it is. But, but the board asked that we do that. We think it's a good thing, because internally, it helps us be able to present the, the financials in a better manner.
Two things, Brian. How long does, does anybody think it would take to get everything?
That's up to the board to decide. How long you want to bring those together?
I understand that, but there'll be a timeframe there before this low end gets, you know, and the high end comes down and the low end comes up. How long will that take?
That's up for the board to decide. I would say no more than two years. I don't think you want to do it in six months. I don't think you want to do it, yeah, I don't think you want to do it, you know, immediately. I think you want to phase it in if you do it. Again, this is for the board's consideration. We want to give you all the information and let you make an informed decision on what you want to do.
I, I don't think until the consultants come in and do the rate study, we're gonna, we're even gonna know.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't take the high and the low and say, this is what it's gonna be right in the middle, because you're talking about, you know, we've got a lot more people in the water district that you're in, so it may not be $11 when you end up after they do the rate study.
No, from high to low is $11.
Yeah.
You don't know, you don't know what the new rate's gonna be, but let me ask you this question. It looks to me like this is gonna cost about $70,000. On page 436, what are all those numbers up there, professional services?
Now, look at, look at 424, that's where the price is for the, for the law firm to draft the operating agreement.
It's $40,900.
Yeah.
$41,900.
Forty, yeah, $40,900 plus the five for the law firm, but isn't there another fee in there of about 35?
No, the five.
You looking at the budget amendment?
Yeah.
That, that's just moving money around within the, to pay for. We're not asking for any additional money. That's, that's pulling money out of the, that's just, that's just appropriating money out of the existing.
The total cost is $40,900, which is made up of the $36,400 for the rate study and $4,500 for the attorney. That's the total cost.
Okay, what is fund balance appropriated on that sheet over?
That's the way we're gonna pay for it.
Out of whose fund balance?
The water districts.
Water districts' fund balance is gonna pay for it.
Yes.
But really, this, you know, at, at the end of the day, I would summarize this, and I'm very sympathetic to what you're talking about in keeping up with the cost and the cost coding, because your finger gets tired when you're writing those numbers. But this is a convenience to staff more than anything else.
No, actually, I disagree. There, there are better reasons to do it than that. First of all, you know, we have a couple of districts that are struggling financially, and we continue to get remarks from the local government commission and the auditors about, you know, what are we gonna do? What's our plan for these two districts that we have that continue to struggle? And honestly, you know, with the customer count in those districts, you, you can't set the rate, you'd have to set the rate so high where the, it's not affordable to get those districts in a, in a good financial position. So that's the best reason to do it. The, the saving time and effort is just a gravy or, or cake on, or ice cream on top of the cake.
LGC has been making those comments that I know of for 20 years.
Right.
And we give them the same answer every time, even though it looks like they're different districts. The water fund is set up as a unit itself, as an enterprise fund, and as long as it's positive within that fund, and they go away and leave us alone.
No, it's not set up that way. That's what we want to do. That's what we're trying to achieve. They're set up as seven separate financial entities, operational entities currently.
So, so there, there are entities, there are districts that are in the red, that are operating in the red, and this will bring those together so that exactly what you're saying, it looks like it, you may individually have some issues, but overall, it's working.
Well, all I'm saying is I'm not willing to spend $40,000 so you don't have a sore finger.
That's not what it is.
And as far as.
I'll go back, when I first got elected and I looked at my first audit, one of the big things under the findings related to the water districts, when we changed to the new auditor that we've had for the last three years, I asked for copies of the, of the analysis on the charge offs. The previous CPA firm was using the same number for five years as the charge off dollars. So, I mean, it is a nightmare when you're trying to do that and present the financials fairly. What we're talking about doing is an operating agreement to operate all of them as one entity. I mean, it would be just like if you had seven individual LLCs, and then you decided to hire somebody to come in and manage them. That's what the county would be doing. We'd be managing the seven districts.
Yes.
Under one agreement.
I would say to you that if we don't make this move, then I'm going to have to make a recommendation that we, in the near future, start transferring money from the general fund to subsidize those two districts.
Make a motion that we move forward with the consolidation.
Got a motion by Langley and a second by Busio. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask Christina, I mean, to me, the faster the better. I mean, because the, you're trying, they're gonna be answering questions and adjusting, and the quicker you can get a uniform charge, right?
No doubt, and quicker, if, if we are able to do this and study how to calculate, no doubt, the faster we're able to, depending on the, the better it can be.
That's the whole purpose, is to save money, stop wasting and adjusting and calculating, and, and we're giving it to the auditors and they're adjusting.
And, and it's a little more than just for size convenience. It's also, and I don't remember if you said Peter and John paid them this, but that's happening now. And what, what, we, what are the different things? Peter's always gonna pay a little bit for John, or John's gonna always pay a little bit for Peter because of the way they were set up. We are all coming in after the fact, we've looked at it. I just, I was, someone else was looking at it and doing an independent rate study. If, if we are going, if someone's wanting to be paying a portion for someone else, we want it to be as fair as it can be. And I personally don't believe the way it's currently set up is that way.
Right.
Because there are decisions being made each and every day about how things are allocated.
That's, that's an internal problem that has to do with bad decision-making.
I don't know about bad.
Bad, yes, it does.
Because that's what we're trying to do, is trying to make good decisions by, and if someone.
I'm gonna say one thing, and I'm done. Guys, in politics, sometimes the most nitty little things cause the most trouble politically. And when you get people in this county talking about, we're paying his water bill, and it's because of those commissioners, you know, just be aware of the political consequences of what you're doing.
Are we, did you, did you not promote the program where we moved water from the south side of the river over to the north side?
We buy that water, we got meters on that, Frankie. We know what we're doing.
So the other districts are buying the water? Is that?
Not exact.
Not exact. Not exact.
That's your fault if that's not happening, because that was the intention, and that's why we paid for the meters. If we weren't gonna do that, we didn't need to spend all that money for meters.
But none, and that's, again, there's a lot of things in these seven districts that it needs, the county needs to be, and that's what we're trying to do.
No, what we're doing is, we're substituting accounting and, and smoothing this out for management. I realize what you're up against, believe me, I do, but by the same token, we bought those damn meters for $50,000 apiece or whatever it was, and they're not cheap, and we, why did we do that?
But that's only two districts. That doesn't associate with districts two, three, four, and five. That, what you're talking about is districts one and six, and I agree, there are issues with that, but you're not at the end of the year, but there are other, other issues in other districts.
Well, I know how I'm voting, guys. You guys go out and commit suicide if you want to.
Well, we don't make decisions based upon politics. We make decisions based upon the need of the county.
It's not the need of the county, it's, it's unfair to people that, that are in one district that have paid down most of their debt and that have low costs because of the way their system was set up, to take the money from another system, to, for them to have to give their money to another system.
Do you buy water from the county?
No.
Pardon?
No.
You don't? And I, I'll disclose, I don't either. I'm, I'm on the high count.
If this vote is not to whether we move forward with it, but we've.
Study.
Since I've been here, it's been a discussion. It's been brought up numerous times by the new commissioners, why do we have such a range in the different rates? And so that's, this is a way to try and answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, I.
So a lot of these questions will be answered once the study's done.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One thing here that really convinced me is when our chief financial officer said that if we don't do something now, the whole county's gonna be paying for this water to make up the difference. I called a motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's not what was said, and that's not what was meant. We can, we, we've talked about in the past, if, if a district comes up short, the county loans them that money. When they get on their feet, which they eventually will, all of these systems will eventually pay themselves off, the money comes back to the county.
I thought you assured me you had just one more comment on this.
Well, you keep bringing up stuff that's not true.
You're making up stories now.
No, I'm not making up stories.
I think our concern is that we have districts that will not recover, and, and what the chief financial officer has said, and she is responsible for the finances and, and, and reportable to the LGC, that if you don't fix this, if we don't figure out a way to fix this, then you're gonna have to start loaning money from the general fund to the water districts that can't support themselves, and that will be an ongoing thing. And you'll have to do that, because she can't, in her job as looking after the finances and being right with the LGC, she can't allow that to continue, and you shouldn't allow it to continue either, because it's wrong.
You're saying we got water districts that will never pay for themselves?
We've got some districts that are out there that I don't think you can raise the rates high enough to, 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 to cover themselves. You haven't, you haven't been able to do it, and if you take it that high, folks will just say, I'm quitting. I mean, I just don't think you can do it.
All I'm telling you is, guys, be aware of what you're doing politically. you're doing politically.
Can I, can I make a couple of comments?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, there's a lot of value, as Christina was alluding to, in this rate study. To my knowledge, there's never been one done on the water system, so it's time to do a rate study. And we'll get that back, and we'll have a lot of good information, and we may choose not to move forward with the consolidation, but there's still great value in that rate study. The other thing is, your comment about the negative cash flow during the transition, we wouldn't recommend or allow that to happen. So we would not lower bills without raising bills at the same time.
That's what I'm saying. The only way you can do that is to raise the bills for the people that are paying the lowest rates, and let the higher bills stay out there and roll them in last. That's the only way you can do it.
Well, they would, they would happen at the same time, so the cash flow's neutral.
If you're going to roll into it, somebody is going to be imbalanced for a while. If you're going to roll into it, if you're going to do it all at one time, you can do what you're talking about.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote was approved five to one. Item number 14 is the North Carolina State University ORED Integrated Planning, School Planning Proposal. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rooms the board. As you recall, back on March 23, we had a joint meeting with the school board to listen to a presentation from the North Carolina State University Operations Research and Education Laboratory. ORED, ORED is what they call it.
Like 440.
So you've got a proposal for them. They gave you, they went through that study program with you on the presentation. What they said was, the services, the basic services of the scope of that work was about $20,000. When we had the conversation with them, or when they did the presentation, they provided some additional things, like the transportation impact assessment, and also the community support outreach efforts. We didn't have a number on that at the time that we talked about this. We rolled in an additional $10,000 just in our proposal to say, 20 plus 10, we think that's about right. We finally got numbers from them, and their numbers, what they've said is, to do the basic services, $20,000. To do the transportation impact analysis, which is what you had asked for as well, they said it ranges from $5,000 to $10,000. Well, we essentially have two systems. We've got the north side of the river, the south side of the river. So you can be assured it's going to cost you $10,000. It's not going to be on the $5,000. So that, that takes all of our 30 away. They said that it would cost $650 per meeting to do the community outreach and support piece. So what we've assumed is, you would want to do two on the north side and two on the south side. Like you'd hit Washington and Bell Haven, you'd hit Chaco, and you hit Aurora. So that's an additional $500. So total for this thing, if you want to move forward, is instead of 30, it's 32.6. And we've adjusted the budget amendment to show that, and you have a copy of that. So it's up for the board to determine whether you want to move forward, Mr. Chair.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Now for a discussion. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you, Brian. Now we're down to item number 15, the reassignment of the bid. David?
Commissioners, this probably should be called Assignment of Bid. This was a situation, we've done this before, the general statutes allow it. The county has the bid for this property at $12,285.82 for back taxes. The deed has not been drawn yet. We have an offer to have it assigned for $12,285.82. That's the offer. I have a $1,000 deposit from Emily Elks-Penley. You may know the name, Arthur Earl Whitney, and bid for the property, and I would recommend that you approve it so we can go and get the money, and the deed will then recite the assignment and that these folks own the property.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Evans and a second by Brennan. Any discussion?
Well, I have a question. What's, what's the value of the property? What's the tax value?
It's a, it's a house. I saw a picture of it, but I don't know that, let me see, tax value. All right, hey, well, I don't know.
Well.
I don't know. It was $12,285 in back taxes over against it. That's all I know.
Well, and who are these people? Are they relatives of the people that lost the property, or?
I do not think so. Emily Penley is a physician, works emergency room, I think.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Penley.
Dr. Penley, and Arthur Earl Whitney, I've talked to him one time, very nice gentleman.
I mean.
I think he's going to live there. I think that's what's going on, but I don't know.
We may have a house that's worth $80,000, for all I know. I'm not going to vote for this, because I don't have all the facts.
Well, David, it says, because there were no bids, ownership was assigned to the Bedford County. I mean, did this go through a bid process?
Yes. It was sold at the courthouse steps.
Okay.
Well, for taxes, though, wait a minute, that was the tax foreclosure on the courthouse steps.
Right.
And what happens is, if there are no bids, the county takes it for the outstanding taxes and fees.
That's right.
And that's what that $12,000 is. So you may have an $80,000 house there, for all you know.
But there was no one else?
There was no other bid.
There to.
Is this 74 Cherry Lane?
But a tax foreclosure, we would, normally, we would take this in as a tax foreclosure, then it would go back out as surplus property subject to the upset bid process. This is a closed sale. This is an insider deal, and I can't vote for it, because I don't know what the value, what we're giving away. And you don't either.
I can tell you. I just pulled it up.
What's the tax value on?
The land value is $8,300. The building value is $40,200, so a total value of $48,302.
And you're giving it for $12,000. I wouldn't do that, because somebody may want you to pay the difference.
I would say to the board, based on our recent sales, as we normally go through this process.
You're not going to give this again.
You're actually getting your monies out of this one.
Well, I would say to the board, you've got a $50,000 or $40-something thousand property here, and if you want to make sure that you do the right thing, it needs to go through the upset bid process. Because then you're protected. You're not protected right now. If somebody were to sue you for the difference because of what you're giving away here, I won't be digging in my pocket to pay it, because I'm voting against this. You vote for it, you will.
Why didn't this go through an upset bid process?
The county doesn't own it yet. The county, the county has the bid. The statute allows the county to assign its bid for nothing less than the amount of taxes. This was $12,000 worth of taxes. That's what these people offered to get the property. That's all I know about it.
I don't think we should do it. Okay, you've expressed your opinion. Any other opinions? Have we, did we get a motion?
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion, second. All those in favor of reassigning this, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote was five to one. At least we got more than $500 for it. David?
Exactly.
You've got the next item.
Page 445, we have 12 pieces of property with offers. This is going through the bid process. This is the minimum amount. Some of these, and I think more than one, has already been upset. She's nodding her head yes. So this is the minimum amount. They've already been bid up, but typically, they've gone from $50 to $100, that sort of thing. We have 10 of them. You see them there. That's the minimum for your approval. These will be advertised, and we'll play it on out to the end till we have a final bid on them.
Can we do all these at one?
Yes.
Yes. There'd be a block add, and a table, with all 10 of these, 12 of these.
So moved.
All right, motion by Brennan, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor of accepting the bid, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote was unanimous. Hood, we're down to the consent items that you wanted to discuss. Turn to page 53 is the first one. Page 53.
Page 53.
Yeah, that's pertaining to the 2005 Chevrolet Tahoe with 165,000 miles on it.
Well, I was wanting, I was wanting the Health Department to take that and use it, but you guys voted to let them buy a new Malibu, so that's dead, as far as I'm concerned.
We still had to take action on it. Got a motion to approve that.
Can you get the motion?
Yes.
Well, I was, I was concerned about the same thing, and I talked to Brian about it this morning, and he told me what the process was as far as these vehicles and all the laptops and everything, and we're following policy, so I'm.
Well, we're just taking this one item right now, Gary. This is on the, to approve the surplus sale of the 2005 Chevrolet Tahoe.
So moved.